Okay, council and staff, we are live.
I can't, I have to work on something that big.
Welcome to the special session of council for budget being held at the Salby Canary Hall, November the 17th. We'll start at 10:00, and we're starting a little bit early, and we'll go until the day is finished for us. This is being livestreamed on the town's YouTube channel, so feel free to jump in. It also will remain up there so that you can review it at your leisure. With that, I will call the meeting to order. I need a motion for the adoption of the agenda, please. Councilor Norrie, Councilor Pinal, all in favor of that motion? Motion is carried, thank you. Any disclosure of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Saying none. I'm going to let Mr. Cowery say a few words before we start off. He was not available for the last meeting because he was up to his eyeballs in work, so we're going to let him do his, do his spiel here, as he always does. Mr. Cowery.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. This budget has been put together a little bit differently than some of our previous budgets, and I am very pleased to hear some of the positive feedback that Mr. Dauber got from our first meeting when we went through the operating budget and started to look further down the road beyond just 2021. And this capital budget is doing something very, very similar, trying to establish a framework of how we move forward. I think that there's some numbers in there that could be disturbing, I guess, at first when you, when you take a look at the, the needs of our community over a longer period of time. And this is the culmination of a ton of work on, on behalf of all of the staff in the various departments to try and pull some numbers together. They're not perfect numbers, as Paul will explain, but they are some really good estimates to try and bring our minds around how we want to proceed going into the future with our major capital initiatives. The reason this is so timely now is staff are certainly hoping to be able to sit down with council early in the new year and have a very open discussion about our strategic priorities, about the policy issues that council wants to move forward that have been outlined and identified now at the very first of the service area updates. And I think what you'll see moving into 2021 is a really good tie-in between a longer-range operating budget, trying to come up with a long-range capital estimates for where we need to move our strategic priorities forward. And when we discuss the strategic priorities, you'll be able to see how it all fits in, not only from a community need standpoint, but from a financial supportability standpoint over the longer term. So that's certainly what we're trying to build for. This is a very good second meeting and second step towards that. And then hopefully, as we move through this budget and into early next year, we'll be able to really, council will be able to really align our financial abilities with our strategic priorities, and that'll be a very good roadmap, not only for the remainder of this term, but for future terms of council. So hopefully, this is a good first, first couple of steps forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cowery. And with that, we'll go on with the items for discussion. 4.1, draft 10-year capital plan. Paul, all yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. If I could, as with the first meeting, if I could ask council's permission to, that all my comments would be through the chair, and then just to speak freely in order to generate some discussion.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. So what you have before you is a, a package, and we're going to have it all up on the screen. The first item is basically what you see on the screen, and this is, the only reason I put this in is just in case you're having trouble seeing the screen. I know some of the staff, there's some other staff that had asked to come to look at the work ahead, so they're going to have trouble seeing the screen, so I pop that package in. And then beyond that, as we get into the larger sheets, they're in order of how we're going to address them. So first of all, I wanted to thank council for kind of the indulgence and the changes and being flexible with the changes. On October 27th, of course, we, and as Mr. Cowery said, we, we switched our viewpoint to look at a five-year plan, to stop looking at a single year and look at what, what can we do over the course of five years? What kind of increases are we looking at over the course of five years? How are we going to address service levels, increases? How are we going to meet the needs of the town? And just prepare for, for growth and the pressures that that puts on the budget. And now, today, we're looking and focusing mostly on the capital. And instead of just looking at 2021, we want to look at rearranging a framework, or a way of, of looking at items more in an asset management strategy way, so that we're not reacting as much as we are long-term planning and then dealing with, with reactions that are needed as they come up, but for the most part, having a long-term plan that council can understand, future councils and the citizens of, of the town of Greater Napanee can understand exactly where we're going with that. So what we're going to do today, our agenda is, we're going to talk about a 10-year capital plan, 10-year capital program, and then we're going to look at future projects and how that, our pressures, our needs for 10 years, how that's reflected in the items that are in the strategic plan, how does that relate together? We are going to talk about the 2021 capital projects, and, and then we will look at a few other items coming in, like the Riverside and Riverview cemeteries. We have not assumed them yet, but we wanted to bring some information to council that if we were to assume them as of January 1st, this is what we're looking at going forward. We don't, and I do emphasize, we don't know when we're going to assume that. The, the ministry hasn't gotten back to us yet, but we did want to make council aware. And then finally, if, if we have time, to just talk about a couple of the updates to the operating budget that was presented on October 27th. Okay, so as we started preparing, looking at long-term for the assets, we started looking at the asset classes and the information that we had, putting it together in some sort of systematic way, so that we could, we could begin approaching long-term planning. We looked at the different asset classes, fleet, equipment, roads, sidewalks, bridges and culverts. We've got a number of streetlights. Now, when we say buildings, we're talking about the admin buildings. We're also talking about the wastewater treatment plants, the water treatment plants, boosters, lift stations, as well as the halls and recreation facilities. We're going to be talking about land improvements, and, which is different than land. That's the, the items that go on the land, the parking lots, the playground structures, the fencing, the lighting and the ball diamonds, that sort of thing. And then we're going to talk about the utilities, linear assets, water and sewer lines, the hydrants, the valves, pumps, et cetera, as well as the stormwater that, that we have throughout the, throughout the town. So I just kind of wanted to frame exactly how we went about it, because unfortunately, we don't have all of the information together, and I did mention that at the last meeting. But what we have done is we've, we've put the, all of the information together, because there's really, there's two stages of looking at it, two stages of really beginning to plan long-term, otherwise known as asset management plan. There's the reserve contributions, and then, and then there's expense and analysis, and I'll delineate between the two. So when we talk about reserve contributions, we're talking about as we consume assets. Now, I'm speaking from an accounting perspective. Of course, we're not consuming the roads, they're not going away, but for every year that we use the roads, say like a double-treated asphalt, it might have a 20-year lifespan. So every year, we've concerned, we've consumed 1/25th of that. And the long-term planning looks at, how are we going to replenish that or make sure that we have the money in the bank, that after the 25 years, we have the money and are able to proceed with replacement of that? We say 25 years because we're just talking about an average. It, it may be a couple of years less, it may be a few years more, and there are certain techniques that we'll be talking about over the next couple of years, techniques to, to be able to take those assets and, and make them last longer and thereby decrease our yearly requirement for that asset. But I want to kind of give an example of how we approach those assets, that we don't have the plan as to which year each item is going to be replaced. So for example, we have 48,000 meters of concrete side rock throughout Greater Napanee. The current replacement cost, according to a series of, or averages of tenders that have gone out across the province, is about $135 a meter. The average life cycle for a concrete sidewalk is about 30 years. So what we did is we took the 48,000 meters divided by 38 years. That tells us that we should be replacing, or we are consuming on average, about 1,600 meters per year. That doesn't mean that we're going to replace 1,600 meters a year, it just means that's the average of what we should be budgeting for or saving towards the replacement of. So in 2021, that looks like 100, 1,600 meters times $135 per meter, so we should be putting aside $216,000. Doesn't mean that we're going to be, be replacing $216,000 in 2021, but we are putting the money into the reserve so that when we do replace it, we have the money, similar to the fleet management plan. Now, in 2022, the contractors that might do that replacement, their costs will go up, wages might go up, their fleet costs might go up, gas, material costs, there's a number of items that go up. So in 2022, we again look at 1,600 meters times $135 per meter, but add in an inflationary measure as well. So 216 would have been put aside in 2021, 2022, that amount would be $220,320. Now, we've gone light on that, because that's our 15-year average of CPI index, which is 2%. Really, we should be using the construction index, which is higher. It tends to fluctuate somewhere in and around about a half percent to a full percent more. But for the purposes of getting this information together, getting, getting all of that refined, we just put the 2% on there for now, and I'll explain why in a little bit, and it'll kind of make sense. So as we put this into looking at it for 10 years, we've got a current replacement cost, so that's the 48,000 meters in total, times today's replacement cost of $135 per meter, which adds up to $6,480,000. 2021 is, we spoke of, 216,000. 2022, 220,320, and then it goes up by the rate of inflation until we hit 2030, and then we're looking at 250,140. Now, in reality, we are not putting money aside for sidewalks. So how this looks, I'm not sure, does my mouse show up? No, it doesn't show up there. In the first year under 2021, the expense that's in the white box is 216,000. We don't have a beginning reserve balance, and we're not adding to the reserves. So at the end, in the blue box, we have a deficit of 216,000. That then goes up to 2022, in the light blue box, it shows 216,000. That's our beginning, that's our negative balance in the reserves of the year. Again, at this point, we don't have a contribution to it, so the 220,320 in 2022 is added to it, and then we end up with a deficit of 436,320. So as you can see, as we progress along, if we're not contributing towards that reserve, we come up with an estimated shortfall of $2,365,140. Again, these are based on estimates. We will be refining the information as we go forward, but segregating it, that's what we're looking at with sidewalks. That's what we've done with the, the lion's share of the, of the assets that we looked at so far. So then the next step, once we have that, what we're looking at now is, how much should we be looking at to contribute to reserves? Once that information is refined, we then come up with a plan, and we look at, where can we get, how can we get from no reserve transfers to reserve transfers? What kind of funding is available? And then we start to grow that asset management plan and look at it in a maturity context. So for the vehicles, we've been doing that for a little while. So I've just got a little snippet here of three years of the, of the expense, and these are actual numbers that are coming forward as part of the 10-year plan. You can see there's some replacements in 2021, 2022, and 2023, so we know when those are coming up. We have a history based on purchasing vehicles every year of, to be able to base some of the estimates on. And then from there, we can add funding. So as you can see, in 2021, we've got a little more than a million and a half. We do have a contribution amount of 235,000. And then we, as part of our capital levy, we contribute 450,000 towards that plan. Now, if you remember back on December 19th when we talked about this, one of the questions that came up with from Deputy, Deputy Mayor Kaiser was that, are we contributing enough? At that point, we were looking at flatlining that contribution to 235,000, and then 450 from the capital. We also added salvage values, and that's really based on, what's the percentage of GOV deals? What percentage of the historical cost do we get back in salvage value when we put it on GOV deals and sell it? So we took that average, and we, we, we applied that average to the vehicles once we sell them, that that's a revenue source coming through. So we're trying to squeeze at everything we can. So Deputy Mayor Kaiser asked at the time, are we, are we contributing enough? At that time said, my reply was, based on the current information that we have, yes, we are. However, I'm not confident that we won't have to adjust that a little bit. So we've added in the larger vehicles, and we've also added in some attachments. If you look at the ending balance, 2021 through 2027, we have a, a value within that reserve, and then we start to fall into a shortfall. I wanted to point out that in 2030, we've got a shortfall of over $1 million. So therefore, we need to look at, what is it that we can do that's not going to be a great burden in order to reduce that? So that 235,000 of contribution from the various departments through operating and the 450,000 from capital, we adjusted that out and increased it by 2% a year, which is $4,700 on the operating budget and another $9,000 on the capital. And when we do that, you can see that the ending amount, we have a, a good positive balance until 2028, and then we fall into a short, a much smaller deficit. So at this point, we're, we're okay, but we'll need to adjust it, because we are looking at a bit of a shortfall. But that little bit of a tweak of $4,000 in the operating, that little bit of a tweak of $9,000 in the capital, takes us from over $1 million to shortfall down to a quarter of a million, and then we can look at where we go from there, reevaluate it on a yearly basis, and looking at, at getting that 2030 shortfall taken care of. Does that, does that make sense so far? Okay. Everybody's had a coffee, so they're awake and not falling asleep. We are, we'll make sure that, that everybody's awake. Now, you're not going to be able to read this, but I just wanted to show you that with the fleet, because we've been doing it so long, we do have a good, mature 10-year capital plan. In my mind, this is, this is, this is a full capital plan for that one section. The top, about half, is our light fleet, that little middle section that you can't read in the middle, that's our heavy fleet. And then on the bottom, we have the attachments that go with the heavy fleet. So we've added that in and make sure that we're getting the attachments that go, the plows, the brushers, that sort of thing, for the ones that actually will need to be replaced. And, and word has it that right now, most of them will need to be replaced in that 10-year span, because we've been reusing them so much that they're coming to the end of the lifespan. And then the bottom, you can see there's a couple of red numbers, and that's, that's the funding. So this is a complete plan. This is the goal to get to with all of the categories, but as I've said before, it's a, it's a lot of work, an incredible amount of work. We've had a lot of buy-in from various departments who've been supplying the information, so we're, we're well on our way to getting there. So again, the fleet plan is a good example of a mature asset plan. So the next steps are to include all of those other asset classes that we talked about earlier, to get all of those asset classes into the same mature framework. So I wanted to kind of just define what asset management is, because when we're talking about a long-term plan, that is asset management. We're looking at a systematic approach to look after or have governance and realize the value of all of our assets for the entire lifespan. So for some of the linear assets, for water and sewer, we're talking about 100-year lifespan, 30-year lifespan for sidewalks, and, and then maybe like a 10-year, 11-year lifespan for some of the vehicles, so we're factoring all of that in. There are legislative requirements where the province is pushing us, that we have to have specific things done at a specific time. So not only is this a good system to look at longer-term budgeting, to look at a long-term plan and get a game plan together, but we're required to do it by the ministry, and they have specific dates, so they want specific items accomplished. So on that list, I put it into a chart to show where we are, what's done and what's not done. So July 1st, strategic asset management policy, that was done by the former treasurer. He completed that on time, and it was submitted to the ministry. July 1st, 2021, asset management plan for core assets. So that was actually done in 2014. However, it's really, the plan is really a checkbox, it's a ticky item. We, back in 2013, 14, in order to get some funding, there was OCIF formula-based funding that required an asset management plan. There was an application base for special capital projects, and then there was a one-time small community fund application-based grant, and you had to have a completed asset management plan to get it. And a lot of the municipalities went and they got the asset management plan, they rushed in order to be able to check that box. And some of the larger ones that had a little more resources as far as money, but also as far as staffing, were able to put that into a long-term plan. And a lot of smaller municipalities completed in the way that was required, and it's a ticky box and it sits on the, on the shelf. So now we want to kind of take that information that was gathered, use the, the resources that had been put together back in 2013, 14, and then take that and, and put it out into something that becomes an active or a static plan going forward. We need to define the current levels of service for core assets. So everything on the ground and underground, we need to define what are our service, where are the levels of service? So levels of service for road have been defined, because they're defined by the MTO. Now, we need to take it and apply that to storm sewer, apply that to water assets, apply that to all of our core assets, and that's due July 1st, 2021. Now, we will be starting on that, we've, we received a grant of free consultation time through a program called Amp It Up, and there's a, a group called Public Sector Digest that is working with us on that, and we're actually starting up in January to, to get that together. There's a number of free webinars that are coming out as well, but for the most part, we'll have some consultants that we'll be working with, and it's not going to cost the taxpayer a dime for that. We need to then attach costs in order to maintain those service levels. That's been started, because we're going to be talking about that today. And then we just need to redefine it or refine it in order to meet up with those service levels. Now, all of that work that's been done for those core assets, that asset management plan needs to be updated for all of the assets, including fleet, including buildings, including the land improvements. We do have the ticky box, however, at that point, we'll be needing to update our asset management plan. The slide before also specifies, down the bottom left-hand side, that every five years, we're going to have to update that asset management plan. I believe the province had talked about even making it part of their financial information return, so that the information is updated on a yearly basis. There's a formal plan that's done every five years, but the ministry was talking about having it on the financial information return, so that when municipalities fill out grants, they can actually just turn to our FIR and see exactly what we've done and how we're, how we're doing with our assets. So we'll need to update that by July 1st, 2023. Then we have to define the service levels for all, all of our assets and have the financing by July 1st, 2020. So 2021 is going to be a very busy year. The, the finance department, corporate services, infrastructure is going to be working hard to be able to define those service levels in a way that makes sense and contributes to, to planning. And I'm just going to stop it there, and we'll come back to that last slide after we get into the planning, or into this long-term plan. So I want to draw your attention to the, the first of the large sheets, which is the 10-year.
Just before we go down there, does anyone have any questions for Paul before we slip into the next sheet? Okay, no, thank you.
So page number one is really taking, we have the slide that showed the three years, and it's taking that out, and the first page is light vehicles only, and that takes it right out to 2030, and then into the second page. I won't spend too much time in this, because I know council's seen it before, and I don't want to bore you with that. The second section on page two, so you can see there's a title up top, so we're on the 10-year capital plan, page two. The, the top few lines finish off the 2030 light vehicles, and then we start getting into the heavy construction equipment in the middle section. And we'll be redefining this plan as we go, refining it, and then making sure that, that we have all the information on there. The third section then starts adding the attachments that go with some of the, the larger equipment. And then on the bottom, we have the financing plan. And again, this is, this plan is the one where we've put that extra increase to the capital budget and the operating budget, the $4,000 and $9,000, to make sure that we have, we're fully financed up to 2028, and then we'll reevaluate next year and, and look at finishing that up and being a little bit more, a little bit better financed. Now, as you turn to page three, and, and again, if you have questions, please stop and ask. It starts off, on page three, it starts off with roads. So with roads, like we said with sidewalks, we've taken the full extent of the paved roads at the current replacement value and the useful life of 25 years. So 1/25th of the current replacement price of the paved road would add up to $1,820,000. The double surface treatment would be a contribution of, it's, it's good for 30 years, so 1/30 of that would be 376,000. The single surface treatment is good for eight years, and 1/8 of that would be 425,000, and then the, the gravel would be good for 40 years, and 1/40 of that would be just about $625,000. Now, in roads, we do have funding. The, the historical use of federal and provincial funds has been towards roads. So the gas tax, we have $482,103, and that's continuing on. As you can see, if you scan across to 2030, we don't know if that's going to go up or down, but at this point, I've just flatlined it across until we get better information. The OCIF funding, $667,666, we've confirmed that we will be getting that in 2021. It's also what we received in 2020. And again, until we get better information, we've flat that, lined that across. And then we do have a little bit from the, from the tax base that comes over. It's, it's a, as you can see, when we get into 2021, it's a little less than we had in the past. I'll, I'll explain the reason why when we get into the 2021 budget section. But in 2021, our, our needs are about 3.25 million dollars, if we are to contribute to the reserve in the same way that we're using the roads up. So that gives us a shortfall of about $2 million. As you follow that across, and remember, as we look at historical, we look at it from an accounting perspective, we look at it in exact dollars. As we're projecting forward, we need to look at it more in an economist, so we're looking more in ranges. And that's why we say that the numbers might not be accurate, because we don't have all of the information handy. However, we do know that we're in the right ballpark. We do know that we do have some, within reason, some fairly accurate numbers to go through, and we do have some assumptions that we're making in the revenues, but this is about right now, with the information, as close as we're going to get to accurate. So we are looking at about a $23 million shortfall by the time we hit 2030. Sidewalks, we've covered already, we're looking at a shortfall by the end of 10 years of $2.3 million. Bridges and culverts, it's a little bit different, because we're not replacing kilometers. It's, it's a little bit more of an all or nothing situation. So the first bridge is a So the first bridge is a cheese culvert road. The current replacement value that the director of Capital Works was able to supply from our latest OSIM report, so that's our bridge inspection that's done every two years. It's just been done, so these numbers are up to date and recent within the last month. The replacement value of that bridge is $650,000. It's good for 50 years. So if we were to store up money to be able to replace it at whatever point, it would need to be replaced, we'd need to put aside $13,000 in 2021. I'm not going to go through every one because it's exactly the same formula all the way through. If you turn to page four, that goes on to all of the other bridges and all of the large culverts. And these are the culverts that have been captured within the OSIM report. And basically, all the ones that were mandated to keep track of and report back to the ministry on the quality of that. So the end result is that in 2021, if we were to be putting it into the bank, which we don't, we would need to put $443,000. As of 2030, at this point, because we're not putting any of this thing aside, if we continue to not put anything aside, we'd have a shortfall of just under $5 million for bridges.
Paul, just a question, funding differences between a county road structure, like a culvert versus something that's on a municipal road? How's that addressed?
I believe that what we have here would all be town culverts, town roads. And then the county gets their own OSIM reports for the ones that they own.
Okay, thanks.
Turning to page five, we get into the streetlights. Now, the streetlights were replaced not very long ago. So we do have a lifespan. So then the question becomes, are we going to wait until the need arises to replace it? Or are we going to start putting money aside? And in all fairness, some corporations would go into debt or take it to venture for these kinds of changes. But it really depends on where does council want to go? Where do we want to go as far as how much debt are we willing to accept? Or are we wanting to put money aside? So, okay.
Sorry, just wanted to add to that. When we did the replacement, obviously, the replacement for our streetlights, the driver was energy savings and the cost savings we received back from that. That cost savings was not apportioned back to replace the lights over a period of time. That was simply a savings that was in our operating budgets. So just so council has, when we did it, we did it for energy savings. The reduction in energy savings is just a reduction in our operating budget that was used to help finance our operating. We didn't take that savings and set aside into a specific reserve at that point in time to replace those lights over a period of time. So for instance, as an example, for ice resurfacer, there is a rate that we charge on top of rental rates to help replace the ice resurfacer over a period of time. So when we buy one, we have money from each rental. That wasn't done necessarily with the streetlight savings, but that's something we could take a look at later on. But obviously, we'd have to take that back out of our operating budget.
Thank you. And we even talked about that, I believe, in the operating budget on October 27th. We talked about the fact that we do get machine hours for the work that we do for the county. Some people would then take those dollars received from machine hours and put it into the reserve for the fleet to replace the fleet. We didn't do that. We use that as a way to keep the tax rate low. Same with the streetlights. As Mr. Calery said, we've kept that aside. But as we go forward, you'll see that when we start talking about 2021 and into the future, things that are coming due, like the SPC, the payments for the SPC debenture, we factor that in to start moving forward to fund it. So you'll see that as we get towards the end. In the buildings, now, the buildings, I want to kind of preface it a little bit. When people did their asset management plan back in 2013, 14, and again, I keep coming back to the ticky box meeting, they did what was required in order to get the funding and most of the time they were rushing to get it done. One of the things that is very common for towns, cities and municipalities to do is to look at a building and say, okay, the shell of the building, the walls and the foundations, 75, 100 years, roof maybe 25, 40 years, depending on what style it is. I may be off a little bit, Wayne, I'm just using as an example. And the windows and doors, we might get 20 years out of it. HVAC, we might get 15. So they kind of grouped it all together and said, we're just going to average it around 50 years. So this replacement value is based on 50 years for the full replacement. One of the challenges that we need to do going forward, and we've actually got a plan to do this, is to pull apart the buildings and pull out the different classes of assets. So we've purchased basically a small database where we can send people out with iPads. And there'll be class one, class two and class three. So class three will be, or class one will be the structure. There's dropdown lists of what kind is it? Is it a wooden building? Is it a concrete building? What kind of floor is it? Is there a basement? And there's just dropdown lists that then classify that portion of the building. When we get into class two, now you're talking about, I'm using an example, I might not have it exactly specific, but the roof, what kind of roof is it? Is it a metal roof? Is it a flat roof? And then you grab these from the dropdown lists. And then class three, you start getting into the windows and the doors. And you can get more granular into level four and five, where you even get into desks and furniture and that sort of thing. But at this point, we're just going to stay with the building portion itself. There's training that's involved in that. And it actually gives us our service levels as well, helps us towards that service level due date of July in 2021. But what it does is then refers back to the main database for current replacement values for all those classes. Because there's a building code for each type of HVAC, there's a building code for each type of roof, each type of window, each type of door. It basically gives you the average lifespans. It gives you the average replacement value based on an average of thousands of tenders that have gone in across the country. So we're going to be starting into that and taking those buildings and pulling it apart. Because right now, if you look at the SPC, current replacement value based on our replacement value from the insurance company is just over $21 million. When you take that and divide it into 50 years, it's saying we should be putting aside $421,000 a year. However, that's for the whole building and all the equipment in it. Until we are able to do that work through 2021, we'll be able to come back with a little bit better numbers. It could decrease those numbers a little bit, but on the other hand, it also could increase them a little bit.
Mayor, certainly.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, would it be helpful to have the age of the buildings included in this listing somehow? I understand the methodology behind it, 50-year useful life, but a 50-year useful life might have ended. Well, it will definitely end differently for a new building compared to a building that's already possibly 40 years old.
Yes, absolutely. You're right. And that would be part of working from this model to a mature, long-term plan. So we look at what year, so the SPC, for example, we know was put up in 2004. We know that we're going to, and depending on the type of structure, it's going to be the shell of the building is going to be good for more like 75 to 100 years. So then we put a replacement value on the shell. Then we look at the roof, what type of roof is it? Is it 25 years, is it 40 years? And then we'll know from 2004 how far out to go for the replacement value. We can take the cost of that, we could take the current replacement costs that we get as we go through that exercise in 2021 and project that out to the 25 or 40 years, depending on what type it is. And again, for the SPC, we'll end up with a very, very long list, which we'll only bring in summary form to council. Because nobody wants to have about 200 lines of information for one building. But we can bring that in summary form and then the windows and doors down to 20 years, whatever it may be. And we'll have some specific dates as to when they generally should be replaced.
That's, we had some really great training at Roma and AMO with regards to asset management. And I think one of the other benefits of this is it also gives you a timeline for maintenance on the buildings and how to extend different portions.
Absolutely. And we'll get into it a little bit more, but you've, actually, Councilman Johnson, you've touched on something that's really a good item, and that is that we can do activities to extend the lifespan. Roads is a great example. I know that Mr. Cuthbert presented before about how to extend that road out. When you do your maintenance, like five years, you do your cracked ceiling, you do a shave and pave, that sort of thing. You take that road from 25 years and you extend it out. I don't know if you remember, there was the degradation curves? Now, a piece of software, so all of those assets are captured, they're identified, and they're stored in our GIS system, which is ESRI. And Mr. Cuthbert is working on updating that. Then what you can do is you can take that and bring it into a modeling software, which is something that we had, we're applying for the FCM grant for that. It's called an asset management system. So you take that information, all that really good, rich information from a really robust system that we already have with ESRI, and then you bring it into a modeling system that can take the information that you can put in, say like from a work order system, and all the cracked ceiling, all of the shave and pave, all of the maintenance gets, the work order goes out to the workers that are doing it. But from there, it actually flips into the asset management system automatically. As soon as you click the button that that project's done, then that road will be updated. So okay, now it's gone from 25 years to 30 years. It's not a manual process, but if you get a robust system, it'll actually update it for you. And then every year, those roads are updated to go from 25 to 30 to 35 years. And then what you'll find is that cost, like when we talked about how much should you be putting aside to maintain those assets? What you'll find when you do those activities, that will take that yearly cost and reduce it. However, to do that manually is very, very difficult. But again, there are pieces of software out there that have been around now for a while that are mature, that are proven and that we can use within the various departments to be able to capture that information and then refine that plan more. So thank you for mentioning that.
For council's information, because this is a really good, when we get into the buildings, a very good tie-in to what I was talking to, but as far as when council sits down, hopefully early in January or in the new year and starts talking about some of the strategic objectives, is one of the missing pieces on this, we can talk about financially what the 30-year cost or the 50-year cost is of maintaining the building. But we need to add a column as a community to go down these to say, what is the intended purpose? So if we're going to keep this building for 30 years, what's the purpose of that building over the next 30 years? Because that is going to identify really how much you want to put into it over that period of time or, you know, help determine the surplus list moving forward, all of those types of things. So it works hand in hand when we talk about our strategic planning. You have an idea, if we're talking about North Fred Hall, for an example, council can say, what do we vision as the future of that? We know what the cost is of that particular building. But then we can talk about the upgrade costs or the continued maintenance. And you have both sides of that, you have that, both that pieces of information. So you can compare, you know, all of your halls, your Selby Hall, your North Fred Hall, your South Fred Hall, what's the intended use, what's the cost? And so it's really important we get this piece in place. So when we talk about future service costs, you can really get your head around, you know, what is the purpose of that going into the future? So I just wanted to try and tie those things together because that's what we're hoping to do, starting in January.
Thanks, Ray. You took the words out of my mouth. I was thinking the same thing, because we don't want to invest 30 years into a piece of property that realistically, we may only have for 10, right? So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Those are all great items. So if you flip over to page six of the 10-year capital sheet, you'll see that we do have, I've got a beginning reserve balance of $510,000. So we actually do have a bit of a reserve that at this point, we're not contributing towards, but we do have a historical reserve. So the need would be $881,000. And then as we get into 2030, we're looking at a shortfall of $9 million. But please keep in mind that is with all we've discussed, how we need to refine that information. But this is a good starting point. It does present a good picture because I don't think there's anybody here that's going to be surprised that we have a shortfall when it comes to our assets. Because just about every municipality in the province of Ontario has some shortfalls and they're all trying to deal with it. And we're no different at Greater Napanee.
Deputy Mayor Kaiser.
Thanks. Does the same software give prescriptions as far as managing sort of the list of, let's say HVAC and furnaces? Once we enter the system, if it's got all that data, will it also sort of list out, these are coming up on their replacement time schedule? So we can see that in a very simple push of a button report?
It's one of those situations that the information you get out is the information you put in. And one of those dropdown lists will also have an installation date. So if it's a 15-year HVAC, the installation date was 2014, then it would spit out 2019 as the date. You might want to go have a look at it. So then 2018, you might have somebody actually service it, go out and maybe give an estimate. Is it good to 19? Can we make it to 20 or 21? But yeah, it would spit that information out as long as the people that are putting the information in select the information correctly. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Also, this is a very, something along that line really helps for grant purposes because you can identify what's coming up. We're closer to shovel-ready. And at that instance, once you've done the hard work of getting the information in there, you might be able to pull back on the need of engineers and consultants in that portion because you have, you're constantly updating the information as long as it's a part of your daily process. And that's why when we applied for that FCM grant, we came to council to get that approved running forward. We also put something called like a maintenance manager, and that's like a work order system in that, so that that information will be tied in. Because I think you find that when you put all of your operating maintenance and regular activities into that system, you'll find that information be updated regularly. You might need to have less instances to call in engineers to update the information for you, consultants. And then you're much closer to shovel-ready, especially for the buildings and parks and that sort of thing. There's a lot of grants out there now that we can apply with those. And to have that kind of information at your fingertips with a click of a button would be very helpful and cut down the staff time, again, once that huge portion of work is overcome. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Now, land improvements is another one that needs a little more refining. And we've looked at the different parks and kind of pulled the information out as to the sections that are contributing towards it. I apologize to the people at home. The information that's up on the screen, the descriptions were truncated a little bit. But most of the parks have a playground fence. If they're baldy, they'd have some flood lighting. The information that is in there is based on the replacement values from our insurer. So we'll refine the information as we go forward. But you'll find that as we get into some of the playground, a lot of them are around the $45,000 mark. And I think Wayne and Chris will be here this afternoon can attest that you can't get a playground for $45,000. So those are under projected for those portions. But again, we've got something going, we've got a model started, and we're going to refine the information as we go forward and confirm some of the historical information we're still working out. I know Wayne and I were speaking about the fairgrounds. Is that owned by the town of Greater Napanee? Is it not owned by us? Should it be on our books? Should it be on somebody else's books? I do know we're paying insurance on it. So we'll refine that information as we go. So over onto page seven, there's quite a long list. And based on the information that we have, we should be contributing somewhere in around just over $90,000 a year. But again, we'll refine the information and bring that forward. So we're looking at a shortfall based on this model of about $1 million at the end of 2030. And then we'll just get into the equipment. Over onto page eight, the title made it onto page seven. And then page eight is a list of the equipment. So this is the different tractors, booms, lifts, that sort of thing, down till line 239. And that's infrastructures and parks would be that sort of thing, down till line 239. And that's infrastructures and parks would be maintaining this equipment. And again, this is based on the insured replacement value. So, if we were to have an accident, if one of these machines was to have some damage to it, this is what the insurance company would base their replacement value on, and we'll refine this information as we go. It's a bit of a space there, and we get down to 241. Now, we're getting into the fire equipment, and our acting fire chief has been purchasing this equipment for a number of years, and has used his historical information to base some of these values on. So, we've got bunker gear of 10 years and helmets of 10 years, and these are, these are based on, I believe it's about 30 years of service of how long we're getting out of this equipment. So, we believe that this information is quite accurate. Over onto page nine, we're looking at a contribution level for the equipment of about $200,000 a year. So, we're looking at a shortfall of about just under $1.8 million as of 2030. Now, I have separated out technology. In the operating budget meeting on the 27th of October, we came back with, we had a 10-year plan for technology and software costs. In the same way, we actually have replacement times, and these are accurate times of when those pieces of hardware actually need to be replaced. So, you have the server replacement in there as well, that we had just replaced a little while ago, I believe it was last year. And then we have our cell phones, we have laptops, desktops, cameras for CCTV in here, and those are based on current replacement values and then indexed out to reflect inflation up to 2030. It goes over onto page 10. We have a little bit of a revenue there, and that really comes from the direction of the tower rental at the South Fred landfill site. And I believe that's based on $450 a month with inflation of 2% per year. So, we've factored that, that in there. We had a little bit in 2250. We didn't get a full year in 2020, so that'll be coming forward. And then we're looking at about $5,500 in 2021 to start to fund that. Overall, it's, it's still not enough to contribute, but it, but it certainly is at least a drop in the bucket, and we can start moving forward with other ways to capture funding moving in the forward. So, we're looking at just under $1 million of shortfall over 10 years there. And storm waters, that's based on $4.5 million. I believe it's 6,000 meters of storm sewers. We don't have anything set up yet. There was in 2020, there was, council did approve a plan moving forward for servicing this on condition of the grant. So, we're just waiting to hear that. It sounds like the grant might be positive, so they might be contributing the lion's share of that, of that plan going forward. And we'll have more news probably coming up shortly on that. But at this point, we don't have a reserve set up, and we aren't contributing towards that. So, overall and all, and we haven't looked at utilities yet, but this is the tax-based assets. When we talked about the buildings, we didn't talk about the wastewater treatment plant, the water treatment plant, the lift stations, and that sort of thing. We'll get that, onto that in the next sheet, because the funding is, is different. But on this side, we're looking at a shortfall of about $43 million. Now, I did add some, a few lines of contributions in here. The first one starts in 2023, and that's $17,500. So, this is where we're talking about where we can start being creative with accumulating funding. This was the OBG payment that we're coming up to. The last one is in 2022. I know that we had, we had discussed that previously. When that, when that was set up, we actually took the money, put it aside, and we're paying in a liability account for the principal portion of that, and we're paying that out of that liability count, which means the principal portion of it has been self-funded. It was set up from the beginning like that, and there is an interest portion. Now, the interest portion did hit the operating budget. So, as of 2023, we'll have $17,500 that we won't be paying in interest. So, instead of taking that as a savings and operating, my suggestion is we take that and flip that into the capital budget, and there's a small piece. The SBC debenture ends in 2024, partway through 2024. So, you can see there, I have $275,000 of contribution there. So, what I'm saying is, instead of having it as a savings, let's look at bridging that funding gap, have the 275 in 2024, and then the full amount of $550,000 that we would be paying, that we are collecting in our operating budget, and redirect that towards the capital, long-term capital plan. And then the bottom, for some reason, the title fell off of it, and I believe that was some contributions that we're proposing as we start to increase the capital portion of the budget, to, to start to kind of build that up. If we were, actually, what that shows is if we were to take a 2% special capital levy, because right now, 1% increase would be about $130,000, $260,000 would be a 2%. So, that's just to show you for illustration purposes, what it would look like if we took a 2% special capital levy contribution and increased it by 2% a year, what it would look like over the long term. Are there any questions on that?
Any, any questions or statements, queries? I'm sure there'll be some later.
As you can see, a 2% capital increase helps, but it doesn't fund the whole thing. If I, if I could be so inclined to get on a soapbox for a little bit.
Sure.
Back before 1980, the province owned the lion's share of the, of the assets. Now, Ray's going to correct me, because he's been in the municipal world longer than I have. I know I've got the theory right, but I'm, I'm probably off on some of the dates. But the, the province owned most of the, of the assets, most of the roads, most of the bridges. And the municipalities owned quite a bit less. The province then handed all of those assets down. They would have funded it through income tax, through sales tax, and that sort of, of those funding models. So, they handed us the assets, and now the municipalities are responsible for maintaining them and putting the costs aside, but I don't believe, I believe in the beginning, there was some funding that they'd come down, and they, they do give us some funding through OCIF and some other things, but it's, it certainly is not enough to make up for that. So, I know somebody said, you know, why do we have a shortfall? And like, a lot of, a lot of towns, a lot of municipalities have been interested in keeping the tax rate low, and, and not looking at the long-term cost of maintaining the assets. But I think there's also some responsibility by being handed the assets down without a good, whole funding model in order to replace that. So, there has been quite a bit of strain that have been put on the municipalities as well. So, some of that is, is personal-based opinion, but as I said, I'm, I'm getting a little bit on a soapbox and, and seeing if maybe we can lobby the province to, to make up some of that shortfall. So, at this point, we don't have a funding model to raise the taxes in order to cover that $43 million. We need to come back, we need to make sure that $43 million is accurate, or what that accurate number would be, and then come up with a model going forward. But then we need to ask ourselves, and I'll expand on what Mr. Calery said, when we come back and we look at the buildings, how long are we going to maintain it for? What's the purpose of it? And then the other question is, we have a lot of assets. If we don't have the money to maintain all the assets, do we want to keep all of the assets? And I'm not saying that as a direction. I'm just planting that seed in order to have a thought. As we, as we see this plan mature, just maybe keep that in the back of your mind as to which assets do we want to keep. If you turn over to page 11, we're going to talk about, we're going to talk about water sewer, or utilities, as we call it here. The water sewer pipes, and then we have the Sandhurst Shore Water Pipes. They're good for 100 years, and that is pretty reflective of municipalities across the province. So, in that circumstance, we look at 1/100 using that up per year. So, contribution for that as the linear assets. As we get, again, as we get mature in our asset management plan, we'll be able to identify which sections need to be replaced at what times, get the historical data of when they were put in. So, then look at when they need to be replaced to be able to reflect that a little bit better information. The buildings are based on, again, replacement values. However, I had to make a change here because of the fact that this type of building in our asset policy, our TCA policy, listed as useful life of 100 years, and we know that's not true, because we're replacing the wastewater treatment plant in town, and we know that it's not 100 years old, and it's a full replacement. So, we do have some up-to-date numbers for that, and we do have some up-to-date lifespans. So, I will be coming back as we, as we look towards maturity of this report, to change a few of those lifespans in the TCA policy coming forward. So, all of these plants are based on current replacement values from the insurance provider. Now, we didn't just take it as, as gospel truth. The Water Street Replacement Plant, they had a replacement value of $109,000, which we know is not true, because as we're replacing the whole thing, we know it's probably more like $45 million. I'm sorry, I said $109,000, I meant $109 million. We do know that either we're really, really in trouble, or that, that value's been inflated, and we're going to go with the value being inflated. So, 150 of that would be $900,000. The other thing that I want to point out in this is on line 16 of, of page 11, we have a wastewater treatment plan debenture. So, this 10-year plan not only takes into account saving up for 50 years down the road for when we're replacing it, but is also taking into account the debenture payments. So, please keep that in mind as we start to talk about this, that, that it's almost, when we hit 2024 on, it's almost like a bit of a double dip. And as we refine the information, we'll come back with better information on that. But then, a decision is, are we going to start saving towards the next one, as we're also paying the debenture, which does increase our, our needs? Or are we going to go one way or the other? So, I just wanted to kind of point that out. And again, the, these buildings also need to be broken down into all the subcomponents. As you can see, we've got, we've got an ending balance, which is positive up to 2024 based on this, and then we start to look at a bit of a, a bit of a shortfall. And again, please take it in mind that we are, we do have the debenture payments on that as part of that scheme. The capital expense reflects, if we were to replace it, the consumption portion of those assets in your contribution. So, that's, we went, we'll be talking about that in December at the utilities budget meeting. But that's, there's two capital, capital and a maintenance contributions. They're both equal. So, that's both of them put together. So, in 2021, that's the 200, $2,445,000. The other thing that we did do, and I'll be touching on this a little bit later, is, is we did a little bit of cleanup after the last year-end, as the financial statements were presented, in order to better identify our reserves and make sure nothing else was hanging, hanging out in the equity section. And really, what that means is the capital, capital surplus, every year that the auditors report on that, a big portion of that is the net book value of our assets. But another portion, that might be a surplus or a deficit, depending on which way it goes, kind of comes up and down. So, after those contributions have been made in the water department in the past, there's been some up and down in, in the water department. And we did identify that about $600,000 of that was actually a surplus for water, and it was sitting in equity, but it wasn't in the reserve, so it wasn't part of this 10-year plan. So, again, we, we cleaned that up, we pulled the $600,000 over there, and we did, have identified that on average, we do have a little bit of a surplus on water. So, we've, that line below, that's the equity transfer. That's, that identifies that portion of the funding. And as we go back and look historically back over the last 10 years, that besides the contributions, we do have a little bit of a surplus. We're, we're also making sure that we capture that in there. Are there any questions? I know there was a lot of information really quickly, so.
Deputy Mayor Kaiser.
Yeah. So, taking what you just, you just made a comment about the utilities, and I went back to the buildings. In the buildings on page five for line 92 for the SBC, you're not including the debenture payments as our annual contributions. You're looking at the 50-year plan, but we know the debenture payments remain for the next four years. So, that should, should that not reflect that there?
Yes, you're right. We should, we should reflect that, except for the fact that we've already captured that in the operating. So, let's separate it out between capital and operating. We could bring it over, but I just thought, since we're so close to the end of it, and because it is captured, that $550,000 is captured in the operating, I didn't make it part of the long-term plan, because we, we've already financed that portion of it. But I could, I could easily throw the 550 in, and then throw the 550 of revenue in there. It would come out to net the same, but, but you're right, it could be more accurate. So, maybe I'll, maybe I'll look at doing that. Thanks for that.
Thank you. Just, again, I want to keep drawing back to, to big-picture policy issues that, that this brings forward for council, moving forward from here. One of the things to keep in mind, we take a look at all these assets and how we're trying to fund them, is that on top of the existing assets, and the assets we're going to rationalize, which ones we want to keep and which ones have, have community benefit between now and 2030, we also have to keep in mind that every time a subdivision comes online, we're assuming more assets. So, we're assuming more linear footage of sidewalks, we're assuming more linear footage of streetlights. Obviously, we want affordable housing, we want housing development, we want growth. We need all of that. But as you look at these numbers, and one of the things that the, the staff is working very, very hard on, from an assets component, but is, as subdivisions come online and we have to assume them, we are getting very good valuations now on how much new asset is being brought into the municipality. But we also need to continually tie it back into this sheet, because then we now have to increase all of those things that have to be supported over the lifecycle of that. And that's where, when we're taking a look at, you know, the net implications, and I don't want anybody to take this the wrong way, because we need growth and we need housing development, but we have to take a look at when a development comes online, and what the future taxes, the potential taxes that community's going to pay. We also have assumed brand-new costs with the delivery of operating services, such as waste management collection and all those types of things. So, we have to take a look at, you know, what is the contribution of that subdivision and what needs to be bought into? And the reason that becomes important is because for many years, we have only charged a fraction of what our consultants have said our development charge revenue should be. So, if they take a look at what our development charges should be, we've only ever charged a fraction of those development charges. So, we're always under what our study says, because we want to encourage development, and there's a balancing act. And I'm not saying we ever go to the maximum, but I think what council can do with this new information is when we talk about where development charges need to be in the future, we can actually start asking the question, that new subdivision coming in, what is the net cost of that over the next 30 years? What is the revenue that's going to come in from that new taxation estimated? And where does it balance out? And then, what do we need to make sure that we're getting enough to buy into the system from a growth perspective? And it's, it's really, it's coming full circle, and it's, it's really casting a lot of light on policy decisions when people are, you know, asking for deferrals or those types of things coming into the future, because you can now develop a robust policy based on your actual cost of maintaining the system and your actual costs of growth. And so, the work that Paul has done and all, and the staff and the various departments to come up with these numbers, has a lot of potential benefit on the way you will set policy in the future as, as a council. So, I just want to draw that back in as we go through this, that it's not just the financial implications of this, it's really the policy implications that become extremely important moving along.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that. Even as we talk about the building department, and the fact that with revenues minus the expenses still comes to an expense, it means that the ratepayer is subsidizing the developers, because the building activities aren't being captured by the people who are actually using them. The standard ratepayers are also subsidizing that. The one thing that I, I would say that I don't fully agree with, I agree with most of what Mr. Calery said, but what I don't agree with is when he said to not take it to the max, I would, I would disagree and say, take it to the max, because the costs are going to be the costs. So, either, when the people buy the house, they pay an extra thousand or $2,000 on the purchase price of their house, and purchase price of their house, and that asset has been contributed towards, or new assets or expansion of the assets, the costs are going to be the costs. So it's either the people that are buying the houses to pay for them, or the residents that have been living here for 20 years are going to have to pay extra in order to expand that assets, and, and they're going to be funding the growth out of their pockets. Two different ways of looking at it, we certainly aren't going to have a, a big bun fight over it, but we do have two opposing views on that.
Thank you.
So I'm going to turn your attention to the next sheet, and it's, it's called Future Capital Projects. So we needed to relate this back to the strat plan. So we looked at that tax-based shortfall of 43 million at, at 2030. At 2030, we looked at that utilities-based shortfall of 12 million. And again, please remember that we're speaking at this point in more as economists as opposed to accountants. For a total of shortfall of about $56 million is what we're looking at at this point. We had a number of items that were on the strat plan, and we need to consider what they are. So I listed them out in the categories from the strat plan, and some of them are costs that were put in there in 2017, inflated up to $20,21, and some of them were new costs that were, that were brought in. So we have the Cataract Way Trail Extension, we're looking at about $1 million with that. There was interest in indoor walking track and facility. I was told that, that this would likely be in a, a facility where the pool was. Talked about, I think it was on the park on the other side of the river where we're talking about portable staging chairs and sound for concerts and theater, outdoor theater productions. 2017, it was $200,000, so I've just increased that for inflation. There was talk about the youth center. Now, it wasn't said North Fred, but I, I know that there's been talk with the Jump Start Program and the park going in there, so there has been talk about maybe that would be the location of the youth center. I just made an assumption, we can correct that later, but that was just an assumption at this point. But in order to get that facility up to snuff for it, we're looking at about $1 million. Adding a pool would be $11 million, and the further out it goes, it would increase with inflation. The one thing that wasn't on there that you'd have to consider is that if we were going to open a pool, you'd have to look at an increase of $600,000 per year in operating costs. So that would be about a, is that about a 4% increase in the, in the taxes? Physician recruitment, we've dealt with that in the operating budget, so there's no need to reflect on that. This one, I wasn't exactly sure, but the land for parking lots downtown, I know that we own 115 and 117 John Street, but I wasn't sure if, if that, and again, just because I'm still fairly new, if that's something that we've purchased and that ends that project or if we're still looking, we're still looking at more. Okay, so it was $100,000, and I've increased it for CPI. There was talk about expansion of Market Square at $3 million in 2017, so I just inflated that up. Neighboring parks, I haven't put anything in there because we're talking in 2021 about the Hart Subdivision Park, that's going to be funded from development charges. And then we're, and we'll be talking about the Jump Start Program as well. So I didn't put any numbers in there because I wasn't sure if, if those two parks would kind of capture it for this point of the strat plan or if we needed to add some more.
So the, in the community discussion around that, when it was strategic planning up, option was actually to look at the existing neighborhood parks and whether it was an appropriate service level in all neighborhood parks. So that, that covered the entire community, so it wasn't just new subdivisions coming online. It was reviewing all of our parkland that we have, the level of service we provide in those, and starting community discussions as to whether or not they were appropriate based on the demographics of that area, how it changes over a period of time, you know, where there might have been a place structure, now we need something more passive put in. Or it could be that the, there's a, you know, a regeneration of young families in an area, and we need to look at moving parks around. So the whole concept of that was an analysis of the service level provided in all community parks and whether they're appropriate, and then how much money would be needed to move that forward. So that's, that's definitely a good start. Obviously, development charges and new subdivisions, those discussions come online during the development process, but the existing ones we have need to be reviewed as well.
And then that's where I come back to my discussion on the development charges, making sure that we have them high. I can't remember, can you please remind me, do we charge, when we do a severance, do we charge a parkland fee on the severance? That's a common charge. Okay. There's a lot of municipalities that charge $1,200 every time there's a severance, and it goes into parkland, and it's, but it has, it's like a development charge that has to be used for parks anyway, something to consider.
I'm just, on this, on this parkland, because we, we do have subdivisions that we have, have the parkland sitting there, it has not been developed, and we've got two or three more that are going to be coming online. Are we going to be going over the costs and the development today of those? Because I know a lot of people are getting anxious about, about the plans for that. Certainly, Westbridge Estates has sat without, without their parkland, and they were good to, to let us get through this year, but we, we've got to get, and we also got to get out and do something for them. We also need plans ahead for the other subdivisions that are coming in, and we need to make a decision on North Fred. We need to either move with the Jump Start or, or pass it by. That, that money's sitting there, and I don't think that the donor is going to want to wait forever, and I'm sorry to be so frank about it, but we, we do need to do it.
If I could.
Certainly.
I can try and respond to some of that. This is, this is really why, you know, staff is, is certainly hoping once we get on the, right on the, right on the tails of this budget, this budget is getting into January and really sitting in down and taking a look at the, the strategic priorities that were there when we started this council, the things that are priorities for this council that they've added, not necessarily as strategic construction items, which was where this was at the point of election, but there's a number of priorities that council has added that they want to see happen before the end of this term. And we want to make sure that we have an understanding of how to reevaluate them because something like neighborhood parks, that is a, you know, even given with COVID, that's, that's a large undertaking without COVID to get all the community consultations to take place. Because as you said, it's not just, it's not just the new ones, it's, it's all the existing parkland and having community consultations to allow everybody to have input into the parklands in their neighborhood or in their areas throughout the community. Obviously, those are, I mean, that's why we have the, the community engagement position is to, is to start those conversations. But as we go down the list, you know, from a staff perspective, we want to make sure we have a very clear understanding from council as to how you would rate where to apply our time to these. So, you know, for instance, right now, going into the last election and the first part of this election, the, the pool was a huge, was a huge push, it was a huge time consumer and amount of staff. And that's why in January, what we'd like to come back to is not just the financial component of this, but give council a clear understanding of who in the organization's been assigned to these projects, who are working on them behind the scenes right now and, and the time, and then we can reevaluate our own internal resources to make sure that the ones that council wants to move first and the ones that council want accomplished before the end of the term are the ones where we're focusing on. If that, if that answers the question, but the.
It answers it, but I don't like the answer.
From, from a boots-on-the-ground perspective, when we talk about the 2021 budget coming forward, Mr. Cuthbert's going to be coming up and speaking quite a bit to the rose, but Mr. Taylor is here as well, and he'll be speaking to the parks because they have been approaching and broaching that subject. We do have, as we're talking about the Hart subdivision, that's one that's brand-new. Because of that, it's, because it's a brand-new subdivision, we can basically fund it from development charges. So we can have a discussion in moving forward for that. Now, the, the other thing is I've had to look historically of grants that we've applied for, and we haven't applied for a Trillium grant in, in a while, and that's a low, that's a great low-hanging fruit. I think I've had a yearly, annual succession rate on getting, every year having a park redone and half of it being funded from the Trillium Fund. So we are working together to start making that an annual application for the Trillium Grant and looking at a half a park every year being funded from the Trillium Grant because they love to have their plaques up on parks. But also, if it's in a new subdivision, then we could look at the possibilities of the other half from development charges. That's just kind of throwing some information out there, but as I said, Mr. Taylor will be speaking more towards that later today.
Okay, thank you. Certainly.
And Madam Mayor, I think I, I know where you're, I think I know where you're trying to go with the, with the one particular park that's been a long time, sorry, in development. There has been a lot of community consultations taken place, and obviously, the new park in that particular, in one particular subdivision, there was a, a lot of planning and a lot of community consultation that's already done. So that doesn't need to be redone. I think it was placed on hold simply because there was some uncertainty as to where the Jump Start was going and what it would apply to. And I think with some conclusions on that from this council and some directions already been given, the other parkland stuff can, can, can really pick up speed. I don't think we need to recon, or, I don't want to say reconsult. I don't think, I think the consultation we've done hasn't been lost. All of that information can be used to move projects ahead. I just think we want to make sure that we're not forgetting existing parks that may be underserviced or underused as we're looking at the development of new parks as well.
I certainly agree 100%, but, but we, I'm just going to leave it at that.
Okay.
For the time being.
Thanks. So we're down on line 24 of the Future Capital Projects sheet. There was, one of the items put in there had to do with waterfront access and boat launches. It was 500,000, and I've inflated it up. Community Improvement Plan, I didn't put a dollar value in there because the reality is these studies that have anything to do with development growth are 90% funded from development charges. And I'm sure that with a study like this, we can absorb the rest in operating. Creating and servicing new industrial lands, it was put down as 5 million, so I've inflated it up to about 5.4. I'm not sure if the Richmond Industrial Park was a part of that or if this is something that's separate. It is part of it, okay. So this will be something that'll come out of the, the OP study that Mr. Knobbs will be doing in, in 2021. So more information to come forward for that. Now, there were a couple of projects that have been communicated that there was interest. I, I put them on, I, I know they weren't officially part of the strat plan, but I know they've been talked about more than once, so therefore I thought I'd put that on here. One was a riverfront walkway extension, I believe there might be some funding for that, 750,000. And then there was talk about a central administration building at some point down the road. So be looking at about 6.4 million. So the funding shortfall for the tax-based utility base with the, of the strat plan, that would add about another $30 million of, of a shortfall for that.
So line 22 is expansion of Market Square and line 30 is central admin, are they not redundant to some extent?
If, if the central admin is in Market Square, but if it's not, then, then no, they wouldn't. Unless we were to sell the building and, yeah.
They are combined projects.
They are combined projects? Okay.
They're not necessarily.
So I'll update that then, then, so there is some redundancy in there, thank you.
Yeah, Council McCormack?
Just to go back to grant funding, we've brought this up before, municipalities and organizations that hire specialists, that's what they do.
Yes.
I hope we're not missing opportunities. You just brought up the Trillium Fund, so seems to me there's something that we might not have applied for when we could have or should have, and maybe it's something to consider, looking at professionals that are available that do this. I mean, they charge a fee, but in the, the long run, we might, it might benefit the municipality to, to look into areas that we've never touched before.
There, there are services that offer it in, in two different stages. There are organizations that will make sure that you're aware of all the funding, they'll, they'll set up a time to question you as to your, your structure, your assets, get a feel for the town as a whole, and then filter those opportunities come up to make sure that you're always aware of them. That's one service level. And then the other service level that they offer on top of that would be to actually help write some of the, the grants, if, if that's something that you desire. But there, there actually is a services online, and as you go through and you pick out those grants, you get an email on a weekly basis to the grants that would be specifically tailored for you. I forgot the name of it, but I was at the Municipal Finance Officers Association, and they're, they were doing a presentation on it, it was about $1,500 a year.
Well, back, I remember Ray said that we're on board with that program where we are apprised of certain funding that's available and all that, but I think maybe we, we drop the ball sometimes, it's not on purpose, but there, there might be additional funding that's available to us, and we should look at, you know, any opportunity that we're, we're missing on, we should look into.
There, there is some, and as Mr. Calery had said, there is some, some of the different provincial agencies do send emails out on a regular basis, so we do get some emails. A service like this would be somebody who would actually go through and, and basically do what's called scraping for all the grant opportunities, put them all to one location, and then send you that regular email to make sure you don't miss.
Deputy Mayor Kaiser, and, and then I'm going to make a suggestion that we put something in, on the books that, that we do look into, even the cost of that kind of a service if, if council's interested. Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I don't, not to take away from that in the least, but when we talked a while back about taking on party inspections, the selection of option six, I don't even remember all the details of the dates, I didn't find it in my notes that quickly. But part of the logic in that was that if we hired a full-time person to do party inspections, they could also take on environmental compliance, and some of that was seeking and helping with grant applications in some of the parts. Was that not, did I catch that right? It certainly was some of the larger projects or development projects that if there was funding from provincial level or federal level, that that funding, seeking of funding and grants would be sought by that person as well?
Well, certainly, certainly from an environmental standpoint, there was a large component of that job that was environmental education and, and research on that, and also floodplain management is included in that, in that current posting that's out. So there would certainly be, you know, in, in those working areas, there would certainly be an opportunity to do additional research on that. We were also part of a, a program, and we haven't been in a few years in, in fairness, Council McCormack, that actually, there was a couple of people that had, that regularly were, were getting updates from a, a large sector, and it wasn't just grants, it was actually anybody who has, you know, trust funds set up or funding available through bequeaths and, and all of those types of things that you could apply to. And, and I, you know, I certainly support the idea of also using an outside service because from a, from a perspective, as council knows, we are, you know, we're not, we're not lush with, with staff that don't have a full-time, full-time appointment to their time. But I think that the other issue that we've floundered with in the past, in, in all fairness, was that there was, although we've had a few projects come on, on the books, really we didn't have a list of what the community wanted as far as projects until this last really strategic report came forward. And this council, obviously, the last council had it for a very short period of time, and then this council's inherited it, and we've kind of lost some time with COVID and everything else on trying to, on trying to do this. But there's been some substantial work done from our committees on a number of these projects as well. So I think there's a better understanding of what we're applying for now than there, than there was even two or three years ago. And so I think that we are able to now, to, to now reach out, and we are in a position for that. So certainly bringing a report back on all of those different opportunities would certainly be worthwhile to council.
Council McCormack?
Well, PFAC, as an example, Prince Edward County Fitness and Aquatic Center have a person that looks for grants, and they've been extremely successful with the program. I have a niece who works in Calgary who was in the education business, and now that's all she does for a living is source and find grants and programs available for different organizations. So I think it's, it can't hurt to look into.
So do you want to make that by resolution that we look in, by, by motion that we look into? Susan, is it all right to do this at this point in the meeting? Okay? That we look into having a report come back for someone, service, staff member, maybe in partnership even with the upper tier because they've got a very fulsome economic development, and that it's a shared service that perhaps we could look at, but you, you put your words to it, those, those would be things that I would think would be advantageous.
Sure, I think, Your Worship, we just make a motion that we. Sure. I think, Your Worship, we just make a motion that we look into the available sources, whether it be with the county or just by ourselves.
Okay.
And, you know, go out there and ask who's available and look for proposals.
Yeah. Okay. Move by. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Kaiser. Any further discussion? Yeah. Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing that I would add to that, it would be helpful to have a definition for not just council, but also so the general public would have a clear understanding of what it takes to bring a project to a shovel-ready state. Because for most of the grants, you can't apply unless you have all that background data.
Yeah. No, and as Mr. Calery said, that is something that we are working toward with our strategic plan. So hopefully, it can go hand in hand. So many times, what happens is, the one that's available is the one that we're not shovel-ready for. But this is what we need to work out with the strategic plan. So I have a motion. Move in a second. Did you wish to say something?
Just a point of clarification. So, I just want to be clear on, clear on the resolution. So I make sure I understand. So the intention is, and I, what I'm hoping for is, the intention of the resolution is, is that staff can prepare a request for proposals for these types of companies for council to look at and approve, so we can get that, get that sent out. And that would then give you the background before the proposal goes, to make sure it's inclusive of everything you need. And we could send that out to have companies' proposal and make presentations back on what they could do for us.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Sorry, I would add that if it, if it's appropriate, I think that we should also be considering whether it's appropriate to have us dedicated staff, or, or even a part of an FTE dedicated to that purpose, if that's the strategy. I, I was hoping to hear the appropriate strategy going forward that maximizes our grant opportunities going forward. And if that's internal, external, or a combination thereof.
I think after listening to Mr. Calery and the suggestion that we are tight with staff, and that we haven't possibly in the past taken full advantage of what, what might be available, I think my motion is that we send out a request for proposals from experts or people that do this, and see what's available. And, you know, maybe we'll make an extra few dollars.
And certainly worth a try, even if, if we decide to put a timeline on it, and then it can move into even a part-time staff position at that. But I think that's a great, a great starting spot. So you're good with, with the second one? Okay. Any further comments or questions? Susan, you have what you need? All in favor of the motion? Motion's carried. Thank you. Paul?
Thank you. So, were there any other questions to do with the future capital projects at all? And just kind of, I just want to wrap it up, and I want to make sure I don't rush too quickly if there's any more questions.
Council, good? Okay, thank you.
So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to slip back to that slide presentation that I had. And I'm going to slip back to the very last page. Because what I wanted to look at, I wanted to make sure, are we even in the right ballpark with those figures? Those are, that's some big dollars that we're talking about with shortfalls. And I wanted just to kind of go back and say, can we quantify this at all? So I did a bit of an analysis of our amortization and what our capital budgets are. So on the top, we have our amortization from our financial information returns. We're, we balance somewhere between 3.2 and 3.6 million dollars a year in amortization. When, when accountants look at an amortization when it comes to assets, of course, as of 2009, we switched from expensing big projects to amortizing them so that we keep record of how much we're actually using up of, of all the different asset classes. So this basically says that, that we are using, based on historical costs, somewhere between 3.2 and 3.8 million dollars a year of our assets. With the budgets that's been approved, we have our operating portion. And then down the bottom, last year, we had the capital portion. So part of that would be the $450,000 going towards, towards the fleet. Some portions going towards roads and other equipment purchase. We had budgeted in 2019, $746,487. Of the, of the capital work that was actually being done, we also used gas tax and we used OCIF. So as we looked at what the budget was for capital, we looked at using up $1,787,000 of assets more than we were replacing. I had seven years of data here. You can see OCIF came in, in 2016. And then, that's seven years. And when you ratio that out over 10 years, it's just about $18 million. However, one of the things that we need to look at is replacement value. And when we buy a truck and we're going to replace in 10 years, it's not the same cost at the end of the 10 years. When we replace that 100-year piece of piping, it's surely not going to be the same price at the end of the 100 years than it was going in. So when we look at amortization, we're looking at the historical costs and how much we're using up of that, as opposed to, are we going to be putting money aside for the replacement value of it? So I kind of went on the theory that, well, some of them, like the trucks, they're certainly not going to be somewhat significantly more. But some of the larger assets, like the bridges and the buildings, will be significantly more. I believe that the value of the SPC at the end of the, of its lifespan will be about twice as much. So I took that as a good middle ground, did a little evaluation down below and said, okay, well, let's take our amortization and let's double that to actually come up to see how close we are to the shortfall. So I took the seven years, I doubled the amortization, put all the same numbers in, and it came down to a 10-year deficit of about 53, $52 million, according to the other information we did. It was about $53 million. So it's pretty close. So from there, I determined that while we need to refine the numbers and get them down to more accurate, we're in the right ballpark. And again, I, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, we weren't off in that. And I only show you that just to say that I, I actually did do a double check to make sure that I wasn't presenting numbers that were full of error at all. Now, it's, it's 11:36. We have lunch coming at 12 o'clock. Are we, are we good to 12, or does anybody need a, a break?
Everybody good? Keep going. I'll go.
Okay. So we're going to start slipping into the current year budget. And we have this sheet. That's the budget summary. It's the large sheet, and it's got a little bit of color on it, a little bit of blue and a little bit of green. And it just says Budget Summary, page one on the top. Now, you'll remember back in June, that I brought a report forward. We're talking about COVID and what we were going to do, how we were going to handle some things. And there were a number of projects that got deferred. They'd already been approved by council on March the 19th, but they were deferred in order to make sure that we had the cash flow, to, to make it through and be able to offer some financial help to the residents. So in these two pages of the summary, there's some items that are in green, and those are the items that were deferred. So I did want to point out that we've brought those forward. They've already been approved by council. We've updated a couple of the numbers to make sure that they're reflective, and also to show the funding model for, for this project. So I want to make sure that council is very aware, not just of, if we're going to, if we're looking at proposing funding it from reserve, it's not just from reserve, but it's fleet reserve, or it's SCBA reserve, or it's parkland reserves. So we're very specific as to which reserves that we're, that we're going to be presenting it from. There's two other documents that we're going to be referring to as we go. One is this larger package of eight and a half by 11. It says BES, which stands for Budget Enhancement Sheets. We're referring back and forth to that. And then at the end, we're, we'll be referring to this other sheet called Reserve Balance Transfers. Because as we're talking about which portions we're going to fund from reserves, I want to make sure the council has an understanding of, can we afford that? Is that something that can be done or not? So we'll, we'll start with, with the general government section. A lot of it has to do with the IT department. So I'll call Brent Zatterberg up to, to assist and be able to So the first, the first project has to do with access control hardware. This was deferred in 2020. And in the Budget Enhancement Sheet, it's the very first, it's page one. So this is a continuation of a project to be able to have the FOB control to access some buildings. I know this building doesn't have it because I tried to get in here this morning and I couldn't get in with my, with my FOB.
It does have it. You just haven't been turned on yet.
I haven't been granted access.
That's right.
Thank you.
Turns out everything is.
I may be denied from all buildings. So in order to roll this out, this is, this is kind of a rolling project. Some of the buildings have been done and some haven't been done. I believe North Fred is a building that's, that's on, yeah, North Fred and the server hall. If you look for the project justification in the top third of that page, it does talk about which buildings that that's going to roll out from. The cost for it is $10,000. And there is, this is to be paid out of the tax levy. So again, there is that portion. And we'll, we'll look at the summary at the end, but there is a portion that's of the tax levy that's specifically for some of the capital projects. And this would be one that would be a part of that. Any questions on that? Okay. The second was already approved and has actually started, gone forward. The SPC CCTV replacement, it was approved by council in 2020. If you remember, the RFP came back, I believe it came back to council. And council approved it. I want to put it on here because of the fact that we got to it later, and because of the, the timing of it, it's not going to be done to 2021, which I don't want to confuse it that it's a new ask, but I wanted council to know exactly how it's going to be paid for. And as we're talking about 10-year, I wanted to make sure that you understood where that kind of was reflected in a 10-year plan and as far as the reserve balances go. And again, financing, I just wanted to make sure there was no hesitation or no misunderstanding of that whatsoever. That's actually on page three of the Budget Enhancement Sheets. Oh, I'm sorry. No, there's no Budget Enhancement Sheet. There's, that's another project. My, my apologies. Part of the fleet vehicle that was in page one of that 10-year plan was the replacement of the, of the bylaw. It was a Montana that they had, replacing it with a, with a pickup truck. The bylaw officers picking up garbage and dead animals, and it's kind of hard to have an enclosed area with, with garbage and dead animals. So we thought a pickup might be a little more user-friendly. One of the, in, in that 10-year plan, when we talk about the hardware and the technology replacement, we're slated this year for laptop replacement. Budget Enhancement Sheet, number two, page two, spells that out. So that's the replacement of four-year-old laptops. Laptops generally in a corporate setting have a three-year lifespan, but we've held off an extra year and gotten an extra year out of it, as well as some of the iPads and the emergency response vehicles being replaced with Toughbook laptops. And there's also eight iPads in there that are being replaced. They're all about a year overdue to be replaced, and we're looking at about $60,000 for that. Oh, I'm sorry. That was the pickup truck. We're looking for $60,000 of the hardware laptop replacement. We're going to use some of the IT reserve funds that come from the cell tower rental, and then the rest are, are at this point going to come out of general reserve. And I'll have an update as we go to the general reserve and the balance of that. The one that's on page three that I referred to earlier is a different CCTV project, and that's the downtown CCTV server replacement. I don't know a lot about this one. Do you have any more information on that one, Mayor?
Yeah, this, as you're aware, the downtown cameras, they, they assist us in not just enforcement, but asset risk control. So if something happens to a town building, we actually have film footage of, of any activity in the area. That's the, I have to admit that most of the use of the CCTV is for OPP purposes on investigations. And the, the system is aging. I would ask that council, this is, this is the time for council to consider whether or not we continue with the program. It has been successful over the last few years, but as we have to start replacing equipment, now would be the time to, to make the, the choices on whether or not we continue.
Council, any questions?
Do we get any money from the OPP?
I would.
I guess that's no.
I would have, I would have to think that, that the answer is no. But of course, we are assisting them, even though I know we're paying the bill. We're certainly maybe trying to, to protect our buildings and protect our, protect our people. But yeah, no, it would be nice if we could do that. Brent, are, if it's expensive, is, are there alternative methods of doing this now? Because technology has come so far. Are there like trail cams and things that we put out when the pandemic first hit? Is there an alternative way to do this, that we don't have to have it so labor intense and cost intense?
The trail cams are more of a temporary measure, and they do not, the storage wouldn't be sufficient for what we're trying to do with a CCTV. The, the trail cams we are meant for, when we use them, are meant to place in, in areas on a temporary basis. For example, the ends of, of roads where garbage being dumped or robbing, it's, it's not the same system.
Yeah. Councilor Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. Are we at least getting an insurance rebate for this extra level of protection?
I'm not sure if that's in our insurance. I'm, I'm not sure if that's a, if that's a factor. Yeah.
Our insurer is aware of our program. Based on the way we're, based on the way we're rated, it probably doesn't have a huge impact on it, just because of the, the size of our insurance policy and the different types of coverage. But they are aware that we have it.
Councilor Norrie?
Just briefly, what is the, most we're picking up? Is it mischief? I know our bylaw uses for people illegally putting garbage out. But I mean, outside of an assault at the Legion last year, has really picked up anything major in the, the scheme of crime? More than, more than mischief?
We, sorry, if I may. We often do not know the result when it's viewed by the OPP. We don't get feedback on whether or not it was useful or not. We do know that we're asked on a regular basis for, for downloads, or they come in to view the, the video. It's, a lot of them have been serious incidents. There's been some, you know, there's been some, there's some robberies where there's been investigations. I do not know if, if the, the film was helpful for the investigation, but I do know they check on a regular basis.
Council Richardson?
Thank you, Worship. Yeah. And it's a very good proactive program for, for downtown. I, I think you're right, Mr. Zatterberg, is that we'll never know. Because I know that personally, we've used that system just to see if somebody has gone through town and may be involved in something somewhere else as well. Right? So, yes, it does catch a lot of mischief. It catches a lot of damages done to our properties downtown, but it's also something that's very proactive with respect to whether or not, infamously, bad people stop at Tim Hortons to get a coffee on their way through, either after doing something bad or prior to doing something bad. And I don't know why they do it, but they do it. And it's, it's a very helpful system. Really, it's, it's, in my opinion, I hate spending money on it, but in my opinion, it's a very cheap addition to our insurance company.
Thank you. Good information. Councilor Panell?
Thank you, Worship. I'd like to just take a, a different look at this. And just wondering if we continue on with it, we do the upgrades. Is this something that the cameras are only pointing on the street level, or is this something that we could capture our big bright lights and how and have a live feed on our website page? Much like a lot of vacation places that I look at, let's say Banff or something like that, have a live feed of what's going on downtown. And I would just like to see maybe something like that going forward with our lights and hopefully be able to capture some more tourism, that sort of thing. If the cameras are there now and they're just sitting there, I'm just wondering if we could look at something along those lines as well.
We can certainly look into that.
Do we have to get permission? I mean, we have signs up now saying that there is video surveillance, I'm assuming, because we have to?
Yes.
Okay, so does that then give them, give us permission to go ahead and use it?
That'd be one of the things we'd have to look into.
That's right, I thought so. Okay, but I do think it's a good idea to use it for dual. Okay, thank you. Any other question?
This 20,000, Brent, would carry us for how long?
This is for the replacement for this year and the life cycle on that, it's currently six years old, so you're looking at six, seven years until we have to do it again.
I think $20,000 in the realm of things is really, it's a small amount.
Okay, thank you.
And then the last item for general government would be the cellphone replacement. Mr. Zatterberg speak to it, but I do know that this was, they were two, they were, should have been replaced in 2020, but with the large increase with waste management, we deferred it for another year to kind of help manage the 2020 budget with that large increase. But there have been experiences where the phones are not charging, the screens are starting to go. So there is, they certainly are worn down.
Yeah, this is the same as laptops where the typical shelf life is three years and we've already extended past that.
Just curious, how many cellphones are we talking about? Generally speaking, who's given a cellphone?
65.
65.
Yeah, it's on page four of the budget enhancement sheet.
And what's our current, Ray, what's our current staff complement, is there a total number?
So full-time's around 70, 73, I think?
The majority of staff have
Ray, make sure you're up to your mic, please.
Sorry, 73.
The majority of staff, full-time staff, have a cellphone.
And some of the cellphones are assigned to specific vehicles, I believe, like the night, there's a specific night patrol phone, there's a specific phone that would go with the landfills and I believe crossing guards as well, so if, am I correct in that? Yeah, so if there is any issues that they are able to contact somebody.
Thank you.
And we, sorry, go ahead Counselor Johnson and then I'll jump in.
Is there any reason why or any benefit to us replacing laptops and cellphones all in one year or can we split between two years?
Again, the cellphones were held over because of some overruns in the previous year. So they normally would be in offsetting years, not at all at the same time.
I do know that there's some savings when the laptops are all replaced in one year. And it also usually go with one brand so that it's easier to manage from an IT management perspective as far as the cellphones go. Again, they usually like to keep it to one model, so it's easier to manage from an IT perspective.
So my questions involve, I think maybe this is a little bit where Counselor McCormack was going. We have 65 cellphones that are put out to employees, which they also are allowed to use for personal use. Am I correct there? But I know that recently, not all that recently, we have an agreement with them that there is a portion that they pay or something to do with Revenue Canada. And the other thing is if they are going to be out of the area, it is their responsibility to put a plan on, and I'm going to say out of the area, out of the country. So I just want to make sure that the public understands that we're just not handing out 65 cellphones for everybody to use as they wish. Thank you.
To that end, yes, we do have a policy in place that's coming into effect for all staff as far as personal usage to cover off that particular benefit. Our phone systems are actually, most recently, they're locked from out of country and all that type of thing. So there's an agreement actually that has to go in place and has to be approved by the Director of Finance prior to a plan being initiated. So we do have a few issues with, for instance, previous to this, if somebody went to Windsor for a conference, their phone may not work. They may actually have to phone because of, it's picking up the US plan and we have those types of things blocked currently. So if there is a reason for out-of-country travel and there's a business case provided, then the Director, or sorry, the General Manager of Finance has the approval to put a temporary plan on and obviously we have discounted rates for that when that may be required. I think it's also worth noting that not all phones have the same level of service and we pay a blocked rate. So for instance, some phones are pretty much just a basic phone, they're with no data. Based on the person and the position they hold, additional data blocks are added based on, you know, the expectation of how much they'll be working outside the office. We did go through a total rationalization of phones, basically based on protocols of, you know, personal safety, travel, time at your desk as opposed to time not at your desk. And there was some phones that were actually determined that were not needed and were reallocated somewhere else. So we have done that. And part of what we're trying to do moving forward with is basically automate our system moving forward so that when there's a new position that's either approved by council, that we have a list of all the hardware, like all the support costs that go with that, not just the salary. And that ensures that we not only get all our equipment back, but we're getting in the process now where we found that staff who've left have had off-site passwords to programs for grants or administration type things. So we're managing those much closer than we have in the past to ensure that there's a good transfer of information and a good transfer. Basically, we know where all the equipment is and we get it back when required, so.
And go ahead Deputy Mayor Kaiser and then I've got one more.
Thank you. So I'm looking at the BES for the 65 phones. $20,000 is a pretty round number, but the math would say $300 a phone. I'm assuming we're in a two-year plan because that's the standard now in Canada is two-year plans. As an administrator of a six-phone plan, I can't, I don't envy whoever has to do this stuff. This, I hate doing phones, but anyways, the phone would normally be captured in the plan or the cost of it, the rental costs or the payment plan is captured now and it's, you know, it's obvious and shown. So where does the $300 come in front? And I mean, I don't assume we're getting the latest iPhone 12 Max for everybody or something like that that's going to have an upfront cost. I guess I'm asking for a little more explanation of the $20,000 because cellphones have plans and the plans are, as you said, they're kind of individual based on the job description or whatever that it's going to. But how come it's not captured in the plan and are we on a three-year schedule or are we actually going to be on a two-year? Because two years are more normal now in Canada. And I'll add, I'll add one, I'll add one more little question to that before you go and that is, are we stuck with Bell? And how often do we look at the other carriers and what options we have?
It's reviewed regularly and I would say it's reviewed annually, which is the best service. We're aware of what other companies are offering. So far, Bell has been our best option. As far as the $300 cost, that because we were under our agreement and because of the purchase level, the phone that costs us $300 may cost somebody on the open market $1,000 to $1,200. So we're getting good value that way. The, as far as, I'll let Paul speak to the agreement, but we do have, the purchasing power that we have with Bell puts us in a better position than in the general phone.
So I would just add to that, that under the FPO, so the tender was put out for all government agencies, Rogers actually won the last one and then Bell matched the pricing. But under that agreement, we purchased at a discounted rate the hardware upfront and that on average saves about $25 per month on the phone. So when you take 25 times 12 times three years, it's a significant savings on the operating in order to purchase the hardware upfront.
Thank you.
Counselor McCormack?
I just wanted to clarify, so this is strictly for the hardware?
Yes, that's correct. That's for that upfront cost so that we can keep our operating costs down. And some of those phones would just be flip phones that are like $5 a month.
What would our monthly billing be for the cellphones?
It's just under $1,000. I review it on a monthly basis. We would be paying significantly more than that on a monthly basis. That $20,000 hardware cost, we would save that pretty much in a year and then have savings for the next two years beyond. Not all of them are exactly that. Some of them are flip phones that cost a little bit less. But as I said, we make sure that we review the plan so that the night patrol truck would just have a flip phone or the crossing guards and they would be on a plan that's actually quite affordable, like a $5 to $10 a month plan. And those plans that would normally be $80 for when you have the phone in, we experience closer to about $45 a month on that larger plan for the people that need it for continually roaming the training people and that sort of thing. So if you think in that perspective, instead of paying 80, we're paying 45 over three years, but we're having to pay about 300 upfront.
That's a fulsome explanation, thank you.
Do our town vehicles have radio communication as well?
They do have radios.
Yes.
And so when they use a cellphone, all these vehicles are equipped with hands-free, I guess? I hope we don't have anybody driving around opening up a flip phone.
We have a policy.
No, our policy is, our policy on the use of cellphones is very, very serious as far as hands-free, pull over. In fact, we don't even, although some of our vehicles have hands-free, that's not even necessarily the recommended way. It's pull over and talk as far as our policy goes. But as far as, we do have, I'm going to call backup communication systems as well, so it's not always the phone being used. There is a radio system in the vehicles that require them.
The other double functionality of some of the cellphones is that the new phone system that the town is getting, people will be using the phone on their computer, but those who have cellphones can use the cellphone. So two numbers would ring the phone, one would be when you dial into the town and you dial that extension, you get the person. So that if they're on the lunch or grabbing a cup of coffee, you have a better chat. You won't go to voicemail, you'll be able to, they'll actually ring in. And so hopefully it provides better customer service. At the same time, we're fulfilling the move to a more mobile workforce with that, with the cellphones as well by double, kind of double dipping on it.
Counselor Pennell, then I'll go to Counselor Johnson and then we'll pull this to a halt.
Thank you, Worship. So when we're looking at this, it's relatively a small cost of $20,000 for the phones on a three-year replacement and also on the computers. I'm just wondering, I'm looking at the budget enhancement sheet and I see that in 2021 for the cellphones will be 20,000 and then on 2024, 21224. Are we putting any monies aside during the, in the other years like 2022 and 23, much like what we've been talking about all morning?
Yeah, no, we're not.
Is that something, I know it's small dollars, but is that something that you would even entertain doing or is it too small to get into that kind of a project?
No, absolutely, that's low-hanging fruit. So as we start to roll out a good, mature asset management plan, these little pieces, that's the easy part, that we can look at funding that and picking it off piece by piece.
Not being ignorant or anything here, but we're spending a lot of time on this, on the low-hanging fruit, so it's, yeah, I agree, thank you.
Counselor Johnson?
Just a quick comment. Due to COVID, we also have to be cognizant of the fact that staff at some points in time may need to be working from home and for people who have or living in areas where they have poor internet connections, their phones also can be hotspots. So it's a separate, do we set a separate data package that we have to purchase for that or you just?
Only, there's some people that have that functionality. I'm using it right now because we're so short on bandwidth here that for me to pull open my documents, I'm actually hotswatting to my phone because we don't have enough to livestream and for me to look up my documents as well. So some people have the ability to do that. Not all do, but it's only the people that might be required. If we're out at a training seminar and there's no internet, but I have to get back on to check my email to get back to people at lunchtime, then I'll hotspot to my phone. So yeah, we do use that functionality.
As much as I agree that it may be just $20,000, Counselor Pennell, I'm not going to disagree with you, but I just think that there's so much that this council is getting line by line in the information. It just used to be, this is how much we spend, now we're finding out why. So I know it's just 20,000, but it is 20,000. Okay, let's take a break for lunch then if we can, if that's good with everybody?
Thank you.
Thank you. We will return at 25 to 1, is that okay?
We obey everything.
Okay, counsel. We're live, staff, and away we go again. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm going to ask Chief Koenig to come up and join me here. And I did want to point out, the general manager of Corporate Services did add a little piece of information that he'd forgotten before, that when the cellphones are purchased, the old ones will actually be sold on Gov. deals. So we'll find out what the rate is, but we think actually about $100 per phone, we might be able to recoup. But we're going to -- Gov. deals is a great platform to sell stuff on, to sell extra items on, but they also keep the data, so we can actually go and find out what the average cellphone sells for on Gov. deals. And I can add that to the funding model, that there will be some, every three years, a little bit of money going back into that, so I just wanted to update everybody on that.
And probably the same thing with the laptops and so on?
Yes, with the laptops. So there are a number of different items that we actually can add to the funding model, so.
Thank you.
So the first items, or the first three items on FIRE, actually, as you can see, four of the items are in green, which means they've been previously approved. The three pickup replacements for $70,000 each were approved in 2020 and deferred, so they're rolling forward. And the report, Chief Koenig did bring a report to counsel, asking for early approval to go ahead and get the RFP process going for the SCBA. And that funding is coming from the SCBA reserve that we've been putting away from. Did you have any updates on the SCBA at all, John?
The tenders have been received. I won't get into the numbers, but they will fit inside. Originally, I thought we might be over a bit, but the tenders are going to fit inside what was budgeted.
Okay. We've also gotten a couple of other projects to add on here. For the people here, council and staff, the piece that I printed out for the draft capital budget has a fire master plan and four-story stair tower. I apologize, but the one that I have up on the screen is missing the master plan, so those that are watching at home will miss that, so I'll try, we'll try and speak out the details for that, just so that they don't miss the information for that. So you want to go ahead and talk about the master plan?
Our last fire master plan was done in 2013, and it was a five-year plan, so it actually expired in 2018. C.L. Cowery asked me to do some checking up on awards for this year to see what the costing was to do ahead with another plan. So we were looking at, the ones I downloaded were approximately $30,000 to $70,000 for a five-year plan. Some of them extended them out to 10-year plans, which I made a recommendation when I put it down on my forums here. With a 10-year plan, we can cut down having to redo it in five years again, that way we can just update it ourselves. So basically, it's a cover off where the fire department, from the last eight years, where we moved to in the last eight years, and for the next five to 10 years, where the public, council, the department needs to be, just basically a review and process of moving forward with the department.
Any questions for John? Thank you.
I did want to address the funding for this. You'll be, you'll be hearing this a fair amount from me, but a lot of these master plans, and there's a number of plans altogether that involve a growth component, so that master fire plan will address growth and how the fire department can meet the needs of growth. Because of that, under the, under the, I forgot what your reg it is, to do with that development charges, we're able to fund these plans 90% from development charges. So this plan is estimated, at this point, depending on how the RFPs will come in, between 30 and 70,000. So we've, we've rolled ahead to be prepared for the 70,000 portion. 63,000 of that would come from the fire development charge, so no impact to the taxpayer, and the other 7,000 would be absorbed from consultants within Fire Admin, so there'll be a transfer over from operating. So this, this project doesn't increase the, as far as the funding goes, it doesn't increase the ask for, for capital.
Counselor Penau?
Through your worship, thank you. Chief, I have a question for you regarding the fire master plan. When you mentioned that where we need to be, does that include our fleet management part for the trucks? And if it does, like when we're saying that a pumper truck is 20 years, or whatever the case it was, sorry, I don't have it right in front of me, but is that dictated by the fire master plan, or is that dictated by something else?
Overall, it's dictated by the fire master plan, what's decided upon. That could affect the fleet master plan overall, but it deals with, do we have sufficient trucks, do we have the right trucks, do we have too many trucks, do we need more? All that'll be done during the plan, the review.
Okay, so in that, thank you. And in the plan, it must give you like a how old each truck can be or something?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Within, within that plan, just to kind of add on to that, if there is a growth component that identifies a need for a new truck, then, then we would be able to utilize development charges. But even if that study comes back and says, okay, you've got this size of a fire truck, but now you need a larger size, what we would do practically is to get the quote for the smaller truck, and then get the quote for the bigger truck, and the difference between the two would be funded from development charges. So it will identify that, but it will identify specifically what's growth-related, so that we can make sure that we utilize the development charges and not, not put the burden on the current taxpayer at all. And for those who are listening at home, I didn't have this on the summary sheet, but these, the package is the budget enhancement sheet package, or BES package, and its page number five is the details for the master fire plan, so that way, anybody who's watching at home that doesn't see that on the summary, they'll be able to get the details right there. And then we'll move on to the training tower.
Basically, the training tower, which is, in addition to what we have at our training facility now at NAMBY-BYNE, the fire hall, you're aware of the building we have there right now. One thing that we need to move forward with is dealing with, throughout the town right now, we have basically our only four-story building is the Campbell House. A lot of people look at it and think it's three stories, but it's actually a four-story building. With the additional building that we're starting to do now with the apartments, five, six, and seven stories with the Gibbett project, one of the things we have to train our personnel on is how to deal with incidents or possible fires in higher buildings. So what we have right now is basically a two-story building. The idea is we're going to put up a, basically, it kind of looks kind of like a combat challenge competition set of stairs. So part of it, when finance talks about costing, we're actually going to get some contribution from them to help pay for it, but it's how are we going to be able to fight a fire on a fourth floor or a fifth floor? How do I vent charge lines, hoses, and for the crews to train on? Basically, it's a training prop.
So in regards to funding, the combat challenge team, and we've had a presentation, I know when I first started here, we had a presentation from that, they've got some, some fees, they've got some funds that they've, they've raised, and they're actually going to fund half of that, so half of that cost will come, not from the taxpayer, but from, from the challenge team, and then the other portion, the 20,000, would come from the general reserve.
So chief, four stories, how long will that be valid? Five years from now?
Yeah, generally, it's with the tower, it doesn't matter even if we end up putting a 20-story building up, it's the standard practice of how the move holds it up at a larger level. Right now, like basically, we're dealing with one- and two-story homes. Fighting a fire in a larger building, or an incident in a larger building, there's certain procedures and policies and techniques we have to use differently. So with, even with a four-story tower, that'll give us lots of height for what we require.
Good, thank you.
And that was budget enhancement sheet number six, so the BES package, page number six. Okay, thanks, chief. I'm going to ask Mr. Taylor to pop up for a couple of projects, and then we'll have Mr. Cuthbert come up after that. Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to have Mike Dwyer's going to come sit in. So again, I apologize for this, I made a mistake in that, so we're on, down onto line 42 and 43 of budget summary, page one. I seem to have printed out the wrong one, because it didn't include the asphalt hotbox trailer, so we'll end up turning to the detail budget enhancement sheet on there. There was a TBT to be determined, as far as the costing goes, I did determine the costing, I thought I'd update.
We're live, staff, and away we go again. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm gonna ask Chief Koenig to come up and join me here. And I did want to point out, the general manager of Corporate Services did add a little piece of information that he'd forgotten before, that when the cellphones are purchased, the old ones will actually be sold on gov deals. So we'll find out what the rate is, but we think actually about $100 per phone, we might be able to recoup. But we're gonna, gov deals is a great platform to sell stuff on, to sell extra items on, but they also keep the data, so we can actually go and find out what the average cellphone sells for on gov deals. And I can add that to the funding model, that there will be some, every three years, a little bit of money going back into that, so I just wanted to update everybody on that.
And probably the same thing with the laptops and so on?
Yes, with the laptops. So there are a number of different items that we actually can add to the funding model, so.
Thank you.
So the first items, or the first three items on FIRE, actually, as you can see, four of the items are in green, which means they've been previously approved. The three pickup replacements for $70,000 each were approved in 2020 and deferred, so they're rolling forward. And the report, Chief Koenig did bring a report to council, asking for early approval to go ahead and get the RFP process going for the SCBA. And that funding is coming from the SCBA reserve that we've been putting away from. Did you have any updates on the SCBA at all, John?
The tenders have been received. I won't get into the numbers, but they will fit inside, originally I thought we might be over a bit, but the tenders are gonna fit inside what was budgeted.
Okay. We've also gotten a couple of other projects to add on here. For the people here, council and staff, the piece that I printed out for the draft capital budget has a fire master plan and four-story stair tower. I apologize, but the one that I have up on the screen is missing the master plan. So those that are watching at home will miss that, so I'll try, we'll try and speak out the details for that, just so that they don't miss the information for that. So you wanna go ahead and talk about the master plan?
Our last fire master plan was done in 2013, and it was a five-year plan, so it actually expired in 2018. C.L. Cowery asked me to do some checking up on awards for this year to see what the costing was to do, go ahead with another plan. So we were looking at, the ones I downloaded were approximately $30,000 to $70,000 for a five-year plan. Some of them extended them out to 10-year plans, which I made a recommendation when I put it down on my forms here. With a 10-year plan, we can cut down having to redo it in five years again. That way, we can just update it ourselves. So basically, it's a cover off where the fire department, from the last eight years, where we moved to in the last eight years, and for the next five to 10 years, where the public, council, the department needs to be, just basically a review and process of moving forward with the department.
Any questions for John? Thank you.
I did want to address the funding for this. You'll be hearing this a fair amount from me, but a lot of these master plans, and there's a number of plans altogether that involve a growth component. So that master fire plan will address growth, and how the fire department can meet the needs of growth. Because of that, under the, I forgot what your reg it is, do with that development charges, we're able to fund these plans 90% from development charges. So this plan is estimated, at this point, depending on how the RFPs will come in, between 30 and 70,000. So we've rolled ahead to be prepared for the 70,000 portion. 63,000 of that would come from the fire development charge, so no impact to the taxpayer. And the other 7,000 would be absorbed from consultants within Fire Admin, so there'll be a transfer over from operating. So this project doesn't increase the, as far as the funding goes, it doesn't increase the ask for capital.
Counselor Penau?
Through your worship, thank you. Chief, I have a question for you regarding the fire master plan. When you mentioned that where we need to be, does that include our fleet management part for the trucks? And if it does, like, when we're saying that a pumper truck is 20 years, or whatever the case it was, sorry, I don't have it right in front of me, but is that dictated by the fire master plan, or is that dictated by something else?
Overall, it's dictated by the fire master plan, what's decided upon. That could affect the fleet master plan overall, but it deals with, do we have sufficient trucks? Do we have the right trucks? Do we have too many trucks? Do we need more? All that'll be done during the plan, the review.
Okay, so in that, thank you. And in the plan, it must give you like a, how old each truck can be, or something?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Within that plan, just to kinda add on to that, if there is a growth component that identifies a need for a new truck, then we would be able to utilize development charges. But even if that study comes back and says, okay, you've got this size of a fire truck, but now you need a larger size, what we would do practically is to get the quote for the smaller truck, and then get the quote for the bigger truck, and the difference between the two would be funded from development charges. So it will identify that, but it will identify specifically what's growth-related, so that we can make sure that we utilize the development charges, and not put the burden on the current taxpayer at all. And for those who are listening at home, I didn't have this on the summary sheet, but the package is the Budget Enhancement Sheet Package, or BES package, and its page number five is the details for the master fire plan. So that way, anybody who's watching at home that doesn't see that on the summary, they'll be able to get the details right there. And then we'll move on to the training tower.
Basically, the training tower, which is, in addition to what we have at our training facility now at NAMBY-BYNE, the Fire Hall, you're aware of the building we have there right now. One thing that we need to move forward with is dealing with, throughout the town right now, we have, basically, our only four-story building is the Campbell House. A lot of people look at it and think it's three stories, but it's actually a four-story building. With the additional building that we're starting to do now with the apartments, five, six, and seven stories with the Gibbett project, one of the things we have to train our personnel on is how to deal with incidents or possible fires in higher buildings. So what we have right now is basically a two-story building. The idea is, we're going to put up a, basically, it kinda looks kinda like a combat challenge competition set of stairs. So part of it, when finance talks about costing, we're actually gonna get some contribution from them to help pay for it, but it's, how are we gonna be able to fight a fire on a fourth floor or a fifth floor? How do I vent charge lines, hoses, and for the crews to train on? Basically, it's a training prop.
So in regards to funding, the combat challenge team, and we've had a presentation, I know when I first started here, we had a presentation from that, they've got some fees, they've got some funds that they've raised, and they're actually gonna fund half of that. So half of that cost will come, not from the taxpayer, but from the challenge team. And then the other portion, the 20,000, would come from the general reserve.
So Chief, four stories, how long will that be valid? Five years from now?
Yeah, generally, it's with the tower, it doesn't matter even if we end up putting a 20-story building up, it's the standard practice of how the move holds it up at a larger level. Right now, like, basically, we're dealing with one- and two-story homes. Fighting a fire in a larger building, or an incident in a larger building, there's certain procedures and policies and techniques we have to use differently. So with, even with the four-story tower, that'll give us lots of height for what we require.
Good, thank you.
And that was Budget Enhancement Sheet number six. So the BES package, page number six. Okay, thanks, Chief. I'm gonna ask Mr. Taylor to pop up for a couple of projects, and then we'll have Mr. Cuthill come up after that. Oh, I'm sorry, we're gonna have Mike Dwyer's gonna come sit in. So, again, I apologize for this, I made a mistake in that. So we're on, down onto line 42 and 43 of Budget Summary, page one. I seem to have printed out the wrong one, because it didn't include the asphalt hot box trailer. So we'll end up turning to the detail Budget Enhancement Sheet on there. There was a TBT to be determined, as far as the costing goes. I did determine the costing, I thought I'd updated, but I missed it, but we'll make sure that we cover that off, and my apologies for that oversight. So it's Budget Enhancement Sheet, page number seven is where we are. So that's the dash cam.
Yes, the dash cams are something that we're looking to put into our vehicles. It's being tried by the fire department. Simply, it is what it is, or states, sorry. It's a forward-facing dash camera that's got a GPS tracking on it, so it'll be in all of our vehicles, showing what the vehicle's doing at that time, specifically now that we're entering into the wintertime. It'll give you a forward view of what the snowplow is doing, you know, keep us out of the, or keep us in the legal obligations of, if there was an incident that happened, we're able to pull the data rate readily available. Like I said, the fire department is using it on some of the vehicles now. We have got the data from the fire department on a few situations to help us in the legal battles.
And I know I've seen this in other municipalities, where the whole program to put in these dash cams have paid themselves off with one single legal defense to prove that the vehicle was not in that area. And just in one single defense, it paid itself off.
Counselor Penau?
Thank you, worship. Mike, when we talk about the dash cam with the GPS, is this GPS just recording the location of the vehicle on the tape, or on the, on the storage, I guess? Or is that GPS location actually being broadcast back to somebody's office, where somebody could say, okay, if there's a call or something, the truck's just around the corner, it'll be there in 10 minutes, or something like that?
It's collected on like a, like an SD card type. So if an incident happened today, we're able to track that that picture, video was from today at Selby at this time, and it was this vehicle in this location. So we get the report, we download it into another file or hard drive, and then it's collected that way.
Okay, so, thank you. So there's nothing live being broadcast back?
Not through these, not through these cameras.
Okay.
I think, Counselor Penau, I think what you're referring to is, I know there's some municipalities that have a Where's My Plow app, and you can actually click on it, and you actually see where the plows are, so you know kinda when they're coming around your house, that kinda thing. Is that what you're referring to?
That was exactly what I was going with, thank you.
That would be a significant outlay of capital to get something like that. We're not proposing that at this time, but we're starting a little bit smaller in order to just cover our legal perspective. But that could certainly be something to consider for the future, depending on the need.
Everybody be standing in the end of their driveways, not letting them fill it back in again if we did.
Here we go.
Sorry.
No problem. I apologize, I don't see that I have the hot box on there. Is it further back? Oh, I might have just got it, page, sorry?
Twenty-five.
Oh, page 25, okay, it's just out of order. So it's Budget Enhancement Sheet, page number 25. Thanks, Mike.
So this is a hot box recycler, piece of equipment. It's used by various municipalities in our area. Essentially, what it is, is you put fresh, hot asphalt into it, it keeps it hot, you do your job with it, and at the end of the day, whatever's left of that, you can dump on a site, level it out, and then in the wintertime, you're able to use those biscuits or pieces of asphalt, put it back in, and it'll melt them down. And then you can reuse it either the next day or in the wintertime, like I said. Essentially, it lasts longer with hot ash, or actual asphalt instead of cold patch. Cold patch is a lot more expensive to buy the product, it doesn't last as long, and it's kind of like an environmentally friendly piece of equipment. We did have one that was just sold in 2020. It wasn't very efficient, and it was expensive and costly to run. So this one here can be used 12 months of the year, essentially. Like I said, it keeps your hot, your asphalt hot for the wintertime. It's kind of a thing, you pull up the site, you put asphalt into the hole, it's nice and warm, it bakes in there. It's not something that we're putting cold patch in, and we're always going back to the same spot to fill that pothole, essentially. Look at the one at Dundas and Alma Street, that we, I think, put patch in it for two years, until we finally sat down, was like, okay, let's get to the bottom of this. So I'm happy with the way that turned out. I think we could use it more around our municipality.
Yep, Counselor McCormack?
How much did we get for the one that we sold? Was that through gov deals as well?
Yes, it was, yep.
I can get back to you with that. I was, I was sent a report on what we got, so I do have the information, I just don't have it at my fingertips, so I can bring it back to the December meeting.
Thank you.
Can you write that down for me? Thanks. I did want to draw attention to the fact that this is a trailer, it's a piece of equipment, and it really should be part of the fleet. However, we missed it when we were doing the fleet plan for 2021, so therefore, we're resenting it differently, but also the fact that it's an upgrade. But it will come out of the fleet reserve, so it's contained within the fleet reserve. Okay, great, thank you very much, Mike. And we'll just call Mr., oh, I'm sorry.
Number eight.
Number eight?
PG.
Happens every time after lunch. Oh, sorry, the AVL sensors and modems, thank you.
So this is the AVL system that's currently in all of our large trucks, dump trucks and snowplows. This is a live, live feed recording, as Dave had mentioned prior, or with the cameras. This only tracks GPS locations and the material that's being applied to the road, and the road speed, and whether your snowplow's on the ground, or snowplow's up in the air. Currently, our sidewalk machines do not have this application, so it'd be beneficial definitely for the sidewalk machines, and along with some of our other larger fleet, to say, yes, the sidewalk was plowed, but what material was placed. So this here will track the material that was applied to the sidewalks, streets, and everything like that, to keep us into our legal compliance and stuff of that nature.
From a legal perspective, and having seen legal actions that do happen from potholes and damage to cars and that sort of thing, any of these projects, like the dash cams and AVL sensors, just from my experience, I've seen that they pay themselves off very quickly. And the material that's actually going down, that helps the asset management team as well, gives some information.
Counselor McCormack?
Just in the legislative side, what's MMS?
Minimum Maintenance Standards.
Thank you.
Mr. Cowery?
Yeah, not to overstate the importance of this particular piece of equipment, but we've had, in the last year and a half, we've had two claims where people have claimed damage to their vehicle, and we've had to use other methods to prove that the vehicle wasn't in that location at that point in time, which was fairly costly. The other issue, when it comes to road maintenance, which is really problematic, is, I think our last major court case, we had employees who retired 10 years, being asked to go back and retestify as to where their plow was, was it up or down, was there snow on the road, after two or three appeals. And 10 years of retirement, as you can imagine, our witnesses aren't quite as reliable as what we'd like on some of these things. So this is great, great information, not only, not only to protect the town from liability, but quite frankly, for our staff to have, to know that there's a reliable way that they can recall stuff, and don't have to have, you know, the hand logs that would be required for this type of information going into a court case. So this is extremely important from a staff perspective as well.
Great, thanks, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
And Mr. Cuthill could come up? So as far as Budget Enhancement Sheets go, we are going to be starting on page nine of the Budget Enhancement Sheet package. Did you wanna speak to the crushing first? Did you wanna speak to the asphalt crushing first, even though it's already been pre-approved, or just go straight on the engineering?
Yeah, we'll go straight into it.
Okay. So I'll just mention, the first item there was a crushing of concrete and asphalt, that was pre-approved in 2020, and it's deferred over. That was one of the projects that got deferred. So the dollar value hasn't changed, we're still looking at the same dollar value, and starting it up at the beginning of the year. And again, that's to cut down the cost of materials for roads work.
Move right into it?
Yeah, you might as well jump right in.
So I just see if order we're in here.
So we're just on page nine.
Okay, so page nine is, included this line item this year, and it's, it was just for, within this planning, introducing five-year plans and whatnot, is pre-engineering. And we've identified three major projects in the town in the next five years that we'd like to address, and it's pre-engineering for like a Bridge Street West, between Belva Road and York Street, there's a good chunk of Richard Street, and the remainder of East Street. Three major projects that need to be completely reconstructed, addressing water, wastewater and storm, and full road reconstruction, sidewalk curbs. So those are shovel-ready projects, and we'd like to bring them up to be shovel-ready projects, to capitalize on funding opportunities that may arise, and just to have the geotech soil analysis and everything done ahead of time.
That'll also enable the department to, not only to be ready for funding applications, but to provide more accurate information when it actually comes to the budget, with all the geotech information. And I imagine they drill boreholes and see the substrates underneath, and so if there's any problems, that can be identified early, and council can be aware of better information upfront, with fewer surprises hopefully behind.
And we can capitalize better on, better rates with having the geotech firms and coming out to drill, by filling full days, work with them, because there's minimums to be paid, and having more work to give them is better rates. So if there's no questions, I'll just keep moving along. The next sheet you have in front of you is for our Single Surface Treatment Program. This year, you'll see I've broken it out through our surface-treated roads, and identified a program for a single surface treatment to be completed, and for double surface treatment. The difference in that is, the single surface treatment program, that's, when you see the life cycle of our, of our surface-treated roads, there's a 30-year life cycle. And it begins at year one, when we apply a double surface treatment layer, that's the full surface on the top of the road. Industry standard is anywhere from seven to nine years. So we used an eight-year average life cycle to reapply a single surface layer, and that's, as you'll see, laid out in the report. With this program, we can see it come to fruition, we've had a really good start on it now. Every eight years, we would address all of our surface-treated roads. And that's keeping our good roads good. That's, in my mind, the number-one priority, and if we're putting priorities to our budget, our capital budget items, is, is, let's not focus as much on a road that's already gone, we can't save it, we know it's full reconstruction dollars, but if we can invest in keeping our good roads good with a fraction of that price, I think that's the best dollar spent. And you'll see that laid out there, that's, through our plan of 141 kilometers of surface-treated roads, it works out to around 17 to 18 kilometers. If I pull that up, that's gonna be right in that ballpark.
It's actually on page three of the summary, so the larger summary budget, so Budget Summary, page one, if you turn back to page number three, Jeff has the information of the total length of roads summarized there. So you'll see, I think that's right, the LCV, 18.595, kinda right in the middle, just slightly to the right, you can see a total there of kilometers.
That's correct.
And also the funding for that, we have that being, excuse me, funded from gas tax. In that whole road section, which is summarized for the second half of page one of the summary, and a little bit to the top of page two, Jeff's actually put that into priorities. So when he has the engineering, and then Bend Point, Big Creek Road, that's in priority sequence of the top priorities down to the bottom priorities. So just so council is aware of that, that's actually in an order. And as I said, what we did is, we applied gas tax funding to the top priorities, and then worked over to the, or sorry, OCIF funding. Once that ran out, we moved over to the gas tax in the second column, to start to fund that, and then moved out from there. So just wanted to make sure that council was aware that there is an order to all that.
Perfect, thanks, Paul. And it looks like Paul's placed the, these Budget Enhancement Sheets possibly in order two of priority. So it looks like priority two is the East Street and Mill Street reconstruction, and that's the next Budget Enhancement Sheet we'll go over. This will be the full reconstruction of the two blocks on East Street, just south of Dundas, over on Mill Street to John Street. This will also encompass a replacement, we have two main feed lines coming from our water treatment plant, two trunk mains, and this, the one of them is still a cast iron vintage, we've had break history on it before, it runs directly underneath the hydro substation. I don't even like to talk too much about it, we'd like to get that one changed out. It also lends itself well for timing with a wrap-up of Downey Insurance Building that's being redeveloped down there, and as well as the Gibbards Project. So we're gonna come right at the end of Downey Insurance, tie in with their development nicely, but be ahead of the Gibbards, if we went ahead of this, and the increased traffic flow with the main entrance going through the water treatment plant.
And as far as the funding goes, the balance of that OCIF is $667,666. And we spoke about earlier, the balance of that is applied to the roads portion of this project. Then the last $67,000, or just about $68,000 is picked up by the gas tax, and then all of the infrastructure underneath is, would be the water sewer reserve for the $457,000.
With, with all the markings that are down there, Jeff, I've been questioning a lot as to whether people are still gonna have access, and I'm not sure who to put this to, you, or Peter, or Todd, no, Todd's not here. Will they still have access to the water refill station? Will that, will that access going through there still be open to them?
During construction, I don't see any reasons why we wouldn't be able to. We'll have to work across that more definitive with the contractor, and their approach and method to do it, but there's quite an entranceway there.
That's right.
I think we can stage it.
And it's really important to so many people, if we have a dry summer, that we need, I would hope that we'd be able to do it. It'll be nice to see that corner straightened out.
Yeah, for sure. Again, if there's no more questions, I'll just, I'll keep rolling on through, and you can answer as we go, or I can come back. So again, it's kinda laid out as priority, and all of our side road bridge replacement. This one here is put in to the 2021 budget, and then the way this is priced out right now, we have allocated some funds this year to begin the hydraulic studies and flow modeling and everything else for this bridge structure. So what we're looking at now, the $915,000 that's in the budget this year, that is full for a like-for-like replacement, putting another superstructure right on top would be a standard bridge like you see there today. But what we're trying to do, going through the hydraulic modeling, everything, and geotech, is to see if we could put possibly some pipe arches or something else in there. It would be a cheaper alternative for the area, but, and it would, could possibly be, we haven't priced it out, maybe half of the capital investment. The things about that is, after we do these studies, we gotta make sure we're not impacting any farmland upstream of this, and also go through permitting with DFO and the ministry and everything else. So we're working through that, and we will come back to council with the outcomes of that, and update you, but we have budgeted for the, doing a like-for-like change over there. And the other thing, just to make council aware of, is if we do change it, and we have to go through extensive permitting, this may be a cost. If we change the structure type, it may end up being in 2022, but if we go with a like-for-like, we could drop that in there and do that this year.
So more information will come forward as to the direction of it. As far as the funding goes, I've got the remainder of gas tax funding. As far as the funding goes, I've got the remainder of gas tax funding that at $414,000. And then from there, we move over into some reserves. However, if if the choice is to do it, the other method with the tubing, wait a little bit longer and do it for the lower cost method, then we might not have to dig into reserve so much. So I know Jeff will provide some updated information.
Oh, sorry. Counselor Pennell?
Thank you, worship. Jeff, when we talk about maybe being able to hold this over, what do we expect the life? How much more time do we have out of this bridge?
So we are spending a lot of time going through all of the studies and now with it. If it's something, we're keeping a really close eye on it with this engineering's involved in doing the work up for the type of structure that's going to go back in place. There are areas we could look at. It's reduced to a five-ton bridge now. The realistic of it all, if it gets reduced anymore, the bridge would be closed. That would be the next step. But prior to that happening, keeping a close eye on it, we could invest some money in going in there and putting a patch on it if need be. But we're hoping that we're just going to keep riding it out, use that bridge up. And it's more than capable of handling the weight restrictions that are applied to it now. So the length of it, I think it's a priority to keep moving forward with it. If you stave it off, we're going to be investing money into doing patchwork.
Thank you. So I guess where I was going with that is if you were saying that if we change the design and we're tied up with permits and studies and such and takes us into 2022, you don't see an issue with that right now if we leave it at the five-ton max?
I'm hoping to get an answer within a couple, within a couple of months, hopefully sooner. And if the answer is to go with the pipes and it's going to stave off, we'll have to do an evaluation at that time to see if we want to invest in the patchwork and versus letting it go and just keeping a really close eye on it.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
Yeah, following on that, would that investigation include consultation? And I'm just thinking, Heartache Grains being immediately north of there, there's a lot of farmers who bring grain through that or have in the past, and obviously not this fall. That was a concern for them as long as they get communicated to and they understand, you know, to cut over the boundary road or whatever. But that, will that consultation be part of that investigation at that point, once we know what we need to know?
Yes. At this point in time, until that bridge is fully repaired, there's no way of bringing it back up to the standard to serve them until a replacement is put in place. But yeah, I have consulted with them as well and for the widths and everything with the new age equipment to make sure that we are working with them and we're going to accommodate their needs as well through this project.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, I believe the next one is the Graham Street East Reconstruction. Where this lays is Graham Street, east of Center Street. There's two blocks there that extend over the East Street. We have one block that we've been keeping our eye on for quite some time now. It's the furthest east block between John and East. It has old vintage galvanized water piping underneath it. And another one of those things we don't even like to mention about, we don't have too many of it, too much of it left in town. Very hard to repair if you do have a break on it. And the rest of Graham Street has been upgraded. So what I've done is with the East Street project being only two blocks and this, I've added this all into the tender. We plan on tendering it together if council wishes and get the pricing in. So this would be included into the East Street and Mill Street Reconstruction.
Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
Thank you. Jeff, does that change the priority of line 64 and put it ahead of 61, 2, and 3? Which are next in the BES but on the sheet, on the budget sheet?
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
So Graham Street, well, yeah, Graham Street is priority number five. And and you're asking if it goes ahead of what line was it? What project?
The double surface treatment project.
So no, you're correct. I did get that budget enhancement sheet out of order. After the Oliver Side Road would be the, should actually be the budget enhancement sheet on page 18, the double surface treatment program. Sorry, my mistake. I got them out of order.
Okay, I didn't know, I didn't know which set priority, the BES or the budget?
The summary sheet is the proper one.
Okay.
Sorry about that. That was my fault. Do you want to skip up to page 18?
18?
Yeah.
Okay, 18 is our double surface treatment program. So like we said before, when we're into our program and with all the studies we've done and research, it shows that we're, there's a 30-year lifecycle on our, on our surface-treated roads. And staying on an eight-year cycle, putting a single on, we do hot mix padding that would tie in well with the equipment that the operation staff's looking at purchasing. We'd use it to do the patchwork as well. But this is the double surface treatment. This is getting in, doing basic corrections to the granular substructure of the road and then applying a brand-new top. Any ditching, drainage work at this time, opening up, doing the heavy construction, opening up daylight in the road surface again, this is what would be done here. So what we've highlighted in there this year would be the Lime Lake Road that we we did pulverize this year. There was the almost four-kilometer section. Bayview Drive, old boat ramp road that's right off of Bayview Drive. And we've included Perry Road between Big Creek Road and Town Light Road.
And then the next one would be McKnight's Culvert. And I just realized now, as I was looking ahead, that it's out of order as well in the budget enhancement sheets. We're on budget enhancement sheet number 23, will be the next project, which is line 65 on the summary sheet.
Okay, and yeah, so this structure, this structure falls within its, so when we do our OSUMs reports are biannually and it's a structural review of our bridges and our large culverts over three meters. And this one was identified for post-inspection in 2020. It was identified for immediate replacement. It's reached its end of life. And what we propose to replace this structure with, it's a, it's a, it was a form in place or a concrete structure. We'd replace it with twin piping. So, and it could be done in-house.
The next one will be budget enhancement sheet number 20, which is Winchester Drive paving.
So as we highlighted out too, there's, we try to align, in part of my, a big part of my role here is aligning the priorities of multiple departments in the town. And in doing so, with a wastewater treatment, major project coming up and everything else, to stay on our replacement cycles and everything else. There was a couple here, Winchester Drive, and I really could have almost grouped them together, Commercial Court. Winchester Drive, the asphalt surface has reached its end of life. And, but the utilities underground, talk with the guys and consult back, they're good. They can stave off for the time being. So this is strictly just a, pretty much we'll flop the asphalt out that's there so we don't do a grade raise and a new asphalt-wearing surface on top. Commercial Court is the same, exact same scenario there where we'd just be replacing the asphalt-wearing traveled portion of the road.
Sorry, I just got to find Perry.
And got me spoiled, Paul.
Yeah.
So we're on Drive-In Road, possibly next, BS 21?
Perry, Perry Road and Drive-In Road.
So Drive-In Road, so sheet 20, page 21. This is another unique situation. If you go through the, it's a 2.5-kilometer stretch. So I kind of, I've identified it in to how that meshes into our overall plan, which we have 70 kilometers of paved roads in our municipality. And having that on a turnip, replacement cycle, we should be addressing about three kilometers a year. And addressing this 2.5-kilometer stretch, if you've driven over, it's completely cracked and fatigued. It's end of life. We're, staff proposes to turn that back to a surface-treated road. The reason it was an asphalt road, high-value road back in the day was when the landfill was open, there's a lot of heavy trucks and a lot of traffic that traveled that road. Through our traffic counts, the most recent now, we don't see that being the case. Some of the road has already been turned back to a surface-treated road. So that would be staff's proposal. So we would actually be removing the 2.5 kilometers off our high-value asphalt and turning it, adding on to our surface-treated roads. And it could fall within that maintenance program moving forward. A little bit more information on that one?
Could I ask? On that, I guess I would just ask or suggest a good communication strategy with the people who live on that road to understand that. Because whenever you take it down a notch, you usually get negative feedback. And I'm just thinking ahead for Counselor Pennell, who has to deal with those residents.
Thank you, sir. It's true.
Thank you.
It would be nice. So we're up to Harrington, Harrington Road Bridge. Let's see this.
Page 24?
And it's also on your summary sheet. It's line number 70 of budget summary, page two.
So we've included this sheet into the budget this year. And if you read the, just, I included a bit of a description on it. But I guess, long and short of it is we put it in here as a placeholder. It's identified it in. I'm still working on council's previous direction. It's a, it's a little bit of a slow process to get through and to ensure we get it right. We've done topple of the area. We've done, we're doing hydraulic flow analysis now to see the best alternative, the cheapest, best alternative for that road. So the price that I've included in here as a placeholder has to be vetted yet through the proper agencies and the process, though it is to replace the bridge there that's there now with pipes and do a grade raise, so.
But I would draw to council's attention, I did a little bit of looking into this one. This is on an unmaintained road. It's an unmaintained bridge. It's being used by, it's either one or two people to get the tractors across to their land. So we would be spending 100, over 100,000 of taxpayers' dollars for one or two people that commit or contribute $5,000 a year to the tax coffers. So normally in this situation, we don't see this. In other towns and municipalities, you don't see this as a project that the ratepayers are paying for. If it's one or two people, usually it's a local improvement. And either one or two things, either it's left because it's an unmaintained road or it's considered a local improvement and then charged back to the interested party over a period of, say, 20 years. So I think I worked it out that you have to charge some sort of an interest rate if the, if the farmer or if it's two farmers, I can't remember which, that use it for the tractor for their business use. You could charge it back at about $5,000 a year on their tax rate and they would be able to pay that back over 20 years. That's normally how it's handled in other towns and municipalities, but that's really up to council.
You go first.
I'm not delivering that message.
Thank you, worship. I guess I'd be the one delivering that message. The issue I do have, and you did mention it, is that it is an unmaintained road. And if we're going to be spending a lot of monies on it, I would like to see what we need to do to raise that road up to a standard where we could open it up in, in relative to how much money we'd be spending on the bridge. Because if we're going to be spending a lot of money, then we need to open that road up for other people. From talking to people, some residents on the road, they state that it is being used, even though it's unmaintained, that it's being used for shift change at Goodyear, for people to cut off the corner, if you will, with no, no, not paying attention to any speed limits and stuff like this. So I'm just wondering too, Jeff, as you're doing your studies and your hydrology studies and stuff, that I'm quite sure that this is going to take, I'm going to back up here a little bit. But I'm quite sure that the studies are going to take you into the spring because of the high water that's there. I've seen pictures of the farmers' fields being flooded and such. But I'd like some kind of a traffic count if we could do it. And I'm not quite sure that one of those detectors just laying across the road would work because I'm sure that the public would go over quite a bit, you know? I'm just wondering if there's some other way to falsify the, I shouldn't say falsify, but to bring the numbers up. I'm just wondering if we could do some kind of a photo thing or something to count how much traffic is actually on that road. Because again, why I'm going with this story is to see whether it actually does fit the bill to open up that road allowance. Or that, not, sorry, not road allowance, Untamed Main Road.
So we can, we could go back and possibly, if that was a worry and I know where you're coming from, we can look at historical data on Drew Road and historical counts on Harrington Lane. The issue now, hopefully, we're going to see a zero-traffic count on the main portion of Harrington Lane because the bridge is barricaded off at this point in time. So I don't, I don't think we'd get, we should have a zero count on that road right now.
Unfortunately, I have been down there and there is indications that there's vehicles going through the creek bed.
Yeah.
And that opens up a whole different ball of wax right there with environmental studies and such as well.
So, $101,760. You're not saying that that's what it's going to cost to repair. You're saying that that's what it's going to cost to look into it? It's $101,000 to fix it, to be used?
That would be my price estimate for putting, that's my best guesstimate for putting pipes in that place. But that's not, I don't have, I don't know exactly how many pipes wide it's going to need to be. But to replace the, to replace it with the exact same square area that's there now for an opening, that's what I've done and priced to put pipes in place. So just using a common sense approach, there's this certain size opening now and we replace it with that same or bigger. And to do a grade raise with where the portion of road that floods out now, I put money in there for aggregates. But a large portion of this price is, is permitting. And going through the geotech, the hydraulic analysis, we have to do all of that and have that information to go for permitting for this job. So half of this, pretty much half of this price is permitting.
So I guess part of the question with this, and I'm not going to belabor it because we can do this, do this at another time, but it is farm machinery that is, is of the most importance for them to get back and forth. For at least, that's what, that's what is being indicated to us because they don't want to have to head out to Drive-In Road and try and turn north where you've got traffic coming over on 41 Highway. Are we putting it up so that it's going to be 401? Are we going to allow people through that are, that want to continue to cut through? I'm also having residents call me that saying they don't care whether it gets fixed because they like it that it's kind of quiet. Also, I know that Jerome Road, we will start getting complaints very, very quickly about people cutting through there. But I guess it's a hard call to see who, what it's best for. I hate to see somebody that's used that land for a long length of time be denied access to it. Could we sell them the road and could we sell them the bridge, please, Mr. Harrington? Don't be watching.
That would be a decision of council and it's a possibility, yes. You would divulge that piece of property. But we would have, we'd have to do an extensive look into and see. We have talked about it, but we would need to do, as a committee or whatnot, look into what the future needs of that road could possibly be down the road. And if it's a connecting link or anything that would be possibly reopened.
And I know that we have, I've asked this question before and I don't know whether to go to Peter or Ray, but do we have, do we have an example of this happening in an unmaintained road allowance that's had a bridge go down or had the road disintegrate to such a spot that we've had to go in and fix it? Do we have a precedent here to go by or are we setting one? Do we have a precedent here to go by, or are we setting one?
Ray would be the best, one of the longest ones in this field, but in my 20 years or so of being here, I haven't seen us invest in an unmaintained bridge.
So the only one that comes to mind fairly quickly would be some work that we looked at doing, and it was in the former Richmond Township, and it was a property that somebody was trying to get a permit for on an, at the very end of an unmaintained road allowance with a bridge coming in on the far side of it. And I can dig up some research on what we did with that. That was, there was an ongoing present, there was a number of presentations that an owner made wanting to, a building permit at the very end of an unmaintained road, and there was some, the road had existed for some time and had been used for hunting camp and some other purposes. I can pull out some details on that, but that would be an old example, would be the only one I can think of that would be relatively close to this particular one.
Okay. Well, you know, we belabored it enough, I guess. I just feel badly for the two people that do need access and safe access for it, but I think we also have to be a little bit financially responsible. Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
I just want to contribute one little piece to that, and for understanding, the two farms in question have fields on either side of the creek. So it's not just a question of getting from the drive-in road to the field on the north side. They actually have fields on both sides, and so it adds to the inconvenience if they have to leave the field, go out and down and around on 41 and back in, when you know it's 150 feet away. And that's why it's particularly painful for them to have to bypass and go around. But also, the traffic load and the speeds on 41, when you're driving heavy equipment with reduced visibilities and speeds that max out at 40, 50 K, it's challenging and stressful.
Yep, very much agree. Okay, thanks, Jeff. I know there's no easy answer to it.
So the next budget enhancement sheet would be on page 22, and that's for some office renovations. It's split on your summary sheet on page two between line 71 and line 96, a portion for the roads and a portion for water sewer.
Yeah, so it was identified this year that we, with 45 Commercial Court, you all know the building well, we've been adding more departments and more roles into that building and just shoehorning more offices into the square footage. We're full right now, and I know that there is, we have, some desks are being shared in offices and some are out in the garage space. So this would address our very near future needs with the addition of two more offices, as well as our foreseeable future in the short time. So this would be just extending the portion of our building that's office spaces now, would just be kicking it back into the garage space that's there. It would extend our mezzanine area for storage and files, and it would reduce the square footage in the garage. But with the maintenance department that was utilizing it for a lot of their storage equipment, there is going to be, hopefully, a plan to re, they're already at the wastewater treatment plant, and there'd be more garage space down there for them upon the build of the new wastewater treatment plant.
Good. Thanks.
So that's the end of the budget enhancement sheets, but there are some projects within the water sewer. I just wonder if you could speak to those, and they're on the summary, large summary sheets on page two.
Could I just ask a question? So I don't see anywhere, and I've had conversations with Wayne and Mike about the culvert repair on South Shore Road across from the boat ramp that was severely damaged after that huge storm we had, where the trees fell on top of the vehicles. I might have seen that here as one of...
Most likely just not, if it's correct, is it less than a three-meter culvert? It'd just, it'd be, so that would be out of the handle directly of our operating budget. It's not classified as a large structure. It's a, it's a cross, it's a cross culvert. I don't know if it's in particular the one you're looking at, but with the nods of the fellas, they're going to address that next, in their operating budget, yeah.
Yeah, so under the 3,000 section of the roads, there's a bridge and culvert and maintenance, so that will be handled under that.
On the next summary page number two, so under environmental, we're at Paul?
Yeah, so the raw, line 86 has the raw water reservoir liner replacement, and that's green, so that's indicated that that was a project from 2020 that was deferred from the capital budget and is coming back in 2021. And as Jeff goes through these, the rest of these projects, just be aware that all of those projects are funded out of the water sewer reserves.
Yep. So yeah, as you meant, as Paul mentioned, yeah, the liner replacement of 475, staff, we are, we have come across some other technologies we're researching there, too, and we, hopefully on the December 8 meeting, we could possibly even have updated pricing on that as well. So line 88, the engineering for the 2022 projects, that's actually, there's three major projects in there that would be hopefully addressed the next five years, but that's just a match. It's a 50/50. Most ways we look at it, it's usually a 50/50 split between the public works portion and the utilities portion on these full reconstruction projects. Then it would be on the same, the same three that I mentioned before, the East Street, Richards Street, and Bridge Street.
So in total, it's $150,000 for the pre-engineering studies to get ready for 2022, $75,000 from roads and $75,000 from water sewer for the linear assets.
And then the, this is a same, somewhat of a mirror, but it would be the utilities portion of the East Street and Mill Street reconstruction. So this would address all of the water main reconstruction and the sanitary. So 91, 91 is Graham Street as well, from Center Street to East Street. That's the two blocks of construction I mentioned before. This is the utilities portion that would be for. And then...
It's a French word.
We have, so this is, I guess I messed up here, Paul, but we will refine, with the carryforward of last year at the liner replacement, this, the reservoir line replacement, that was just a 254. That's, was me working on the numbers for the new proposal to use for the liner replacement up there.
Okay, so we can just clean that up and bring that back?
Clean that up and bring it up. And then the secondary raw water line, the price to be determined there, that's where we're working with, that's our secondary raw water intake line that was running under the old Gibbards factory, and will be running under the new proposed Gibbards district. So we're proposing, I'm just working through final numbers there, and we'll have them for December 8. That is a partnership with Dorna Camps to, in our previous report that Mr. Dayful brought to council, is we would be purchasing the material and they would be doing the labor portion of it, so we're still working through design on that. And then the river intake, that would be a redesign of the river intake crib at the top of the falls, and we're working on fine tuning pricing for that, too, and come back to council if that, that may not be a project that would even be able to hit in 2021, but we will include pricing for the December 8 meeting. The drive-in road water line replacement, that is, there's a chunk of water main that's from 41 Highway into the Richmond Trailer Park. The material makeup of that water line, it's, it's substandard. It's glued socketed joints, and when we have a change in temperature, water temperature in the pipe, constructs and, constructs, expands and contracts, yes, sorry, it's popping those joints out. And we've been out there, and we pretty much have a lot of them dug up now, but this would be addressing that, so. And then the office renovations, it would be a split between utilities and the town, and that would be the utilities portion.
And then the last one is a part of the fleet management plan, that's the, that's the one portion for water sewer of a vehicle that needs to be replaced. That's not a carryforward, this is a new one, so that one is up for replacement in 2021. The nice thing about having deferred some of those vehicles into 2021 is that as we put a tender out for all the vehicles at once, we stand a better chance to get some better pricing. And we, when we come back on the 8th, if council's in agreement at that point, we'd like to be able to just go ahead, ahead of everything else and approve the fleet, again, if council's in approval, so that we can get that tender out, get it in early, and maybe stand a chance at getting some 2020 models that are still on the, on the grounds of the dealerships and try and save some significant dollars there. But the fact that we're doing so many vehicles at once, basically a year and a half's worth of vehicles would hopefully lead to some cost savings.
Any questions, uh, council? The, I think I've asked this question before, but I forget the answer. The raw water reservoir liner replacement, that definitely, I know it's the one that's the top, the golf course. It comes, the water comes from Lake Ontario and it's raw. Are we still needing that kind of capacity? Okay, I get a head shake over here, so yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it's for the amount of infrastructure that's already in place up there, and to look at just replacing the liner, it's a piece of insurance, it's a cheap piece of insurance.
Perfect. No, just wanted to know, because it's, you wonder with all the towers and so on that we've got going, but if it's needed, it's needed, and probably will be needed more in the future.
If we see a catastrophe happen, there's 16 kilometers of raw water main that runs out to Lake Ontario. If something happens to that, that just gives us time to, that is, that is a primary source of intake water for the town, and if we can stay off of using the river, by all means, we'd love to have that time to make that repair.
No, just needed it said out loud. Thank you. Anything else?
Just before Jeff leaves, I know that he was involved in one of the carryover projects that's actually down below, and that's the Hart subdivision park. You were involved in that?
Yes.
Did have that right. That's one of the projects that was approved last year, and this is a park within a brand new subdivision surrounded by new houses with the land from that, so that actually qualifies for full development charge. The reason that it's dark green is originally it was $320,000, so that one was approved by council in 2020 at $320,000. Jeff went back to a little bit of work and found out 350 is actually probably a more consistent number to put on that. But again, it's all coming from development charges, so that'll come forward. It was, it was approved, but we'll need, when we wrap up the budget, we'll need approval again on that because of the fact that it's changed by the 30,000. I'm not sure if there's anything you want to speak to that project at all, Jeff?
No, I think you hit it well. We've done the two public information centers. We have a design. Unfortunately, this project with trying to acquire a different funding source a couple years ago, and then COVID this past year, it's pushed it to where it is now at 2021. The one last thing I guess I could touch on is the dock replacement at Dolphstown Sherman's. I did require those updated quote there, too, so yeah, that's proposed to go through in 2021 as well. It was.
Yeah, it was one of the ones that deferred again. Yeah. Great, thanks, Jeff.
All right. Thank you guys.
So Jeff was fairly instrumental in helping to get all those numbers together for the 10-year plan, and we've begun to work out some details to commit some time to going through the storm sewers and the facilities, along with Chris and Wayne, as director of Capital Works. Jeff's committed some time in the new year as we work together as part of the asset management team to develop those numbers, so we can, we can expect some numbers to be updated as well as the service level. So that's going to be a lot of work. Jeff's got a very busy year ahead of him.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Chris, you want to pop on up here? And I will touch, just before Chris gets here, that there's a good portion of these projects that are within here, again, are green. The dark green is the one that changed numbers, but all the others have stayed the same for the SBC HVAC, the two different mowers with trade-in, water fountain for the splash pad, and Jeff taught on the dock replacement. Conservation building exterior, that's still on the books, and as well as a bit of work from, for Town Hall, for the asphalt and concrete steps, they're becoming very uneven and some chimney repair in the library. Those were all approved in 2020, but I wanted to make sure that we have that on here, so the council is aware that we are going forward with it, and to also look at the funding. Again, I'll be fairly literal when I come back from year to year to have those projects, even the portions that maybe the projects have started and were not quite done, whatever's left over, I'll bring back on here, even though it's already been approved. I just always want council to be aware of where we're going to end and how that relates to the 10-year plan, just so that there's always kind of good, fresh information. Can I ask a question?
Certainly. Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
Thank you, worship. Paul, I'm wondering with the, things like the lawn mowers, as a trade-in, would it be advisable to consider GOV deals instead? Would there be an opportunity for better capture of value?
Do you have enough experience with GOV deals to be able to comment on that?
Not that much.
Okay. There, we could certainly look into it. I know in the past, when I've dealt with getting rid of plows and some larger pieces of equipment, we actually got a higher rate of return with GOV deals than when we went through private auction houses. But again, GOV deals is really good to share their statistical information, so it wouldn't take more than a phone call to call up and say, what would you normally get on this sort of auction in the past? So we can certainly check into that and find out. That would be a good idea.
Yeah, I guess I would recommend that, because I know a few years back, we were disposing a pickup truck at the end of its use, and we captured probably three times its value or higher than what a trade-in would have given. It might have even gone for scrap, and we got over $6,000 for it.
Maybe we should just pay a little bit more attention to GOV deals and disposing right across the board. But yeah, we're certainly looking now, cell phones, laptops, phone hardware, even as we're changing the new phone system, the old system is outdated and can't be replaced. However, there might be some smaller organizations that might throw a few bucks into buy it, so maybe we should just make that a bigger procedure going forward. Okay, so we're going to start up with land improvements on your summary sheets. It's line 113 on the summary sheet number two and on the budget enhancement sheet. We should be back in order now, and it's a budget enhancement sheet, page number 26.
Okay, so the land improvements here, we're looking at revitalizing a lot of our spaces outdoors that we've identified as needing improvement, so we're, this cost is basically all the material that's required, and then a lot of the work would be done in-house. There's areas around our community that, you know, our community's very active and they like to be outdoors. We've identified the fairgrounds walking track as an area that needs improvement, as well as, I mean, they're listed here, the pathway through Winchester Park that connects Splinter and Beverly. That's kind of grown in with grass and weeds, and we'd like to be able to put some material down to revitalize that pathway. Same thing's happening here on Park. We'd like to make that pathway more identifiable, so we can make that park look a little bit more pleasing. Then we're also looking at upgrading the parking lots at our boat launches. Some of the areas have, haven't, there hasn't been material applied there in a few years, and it just needs another coat, and we would tidy all those areas up.
So in that, we're looking at funding those works, so as you can see, there's a number of different items on there for the different areas. So this is kind of like a list of the various pieces going together, and we're looking at funding that from general reserves. And when we're done here, we'll do a wrap-up of the reserves, so the council's aware of exactly where we are with that. So we're on to a budget enhancement sheet on page 27. So we're on to a budget enhancement sheet on page 27. So that's line 114 on your budget summary sheet, page two.
So this one is for some underground plumbing repairs at the conservation park washroom facility. Several times throughout the year, we've had issues where it's backed up, and we've actually had, you know, fecal matter and debris come back up through the floor drains in that facility. Because we don't have anyone there 24/7, oftentimes it's reported to us by a member of the public, which, which is even more of an issue. What's happening is the, the drainage from the building to the cleanout, there's some valleys in that. And what happens is some debris gets caught in it, and over the course of even a few weeks, it starts to back up towards the building. Our utility staff has, has camered out from the cleanout to the main, and, and it's clear. And it's good to go. We just need to repair what's underground from the cleanout to the building. And so that would require us contracting out some digging. But our utility staff would be able to do a lot of that in-house. I talked to our operations manager from utilities, Kyle Sinclair, and he's given me a rough estimate of, of 8,000 to, to make that happen. And I'll, I'll just touch on the building itself. It is, it is, is not accessible. It's passed its useful life, so we do need to be looking at an improvement down the road for that building itself. But this would just be to repair those issues underground so that we can have that building operational for spring.
Okay. The, the last item on there, which is line 115, is the replacement of, of the current vehicle. And again, that's on the fleet management plan. Great. So I, I did want to speak to a couple of other items in here. One is, one thing that we kind of have been looking at and hesitated and kind of came back and didn't end up getting the, the enhancement sheet together for it, but it, it really doesn't, it doesn't affect the, the actual ask in the end, is that we, we did a bit of a review of the, of the buildings. The CAO and Chris and Wayne and myself and Brad, we went around to all the various buildings to kind of look at. You know, we need to not only look at a, a long-term plan for capital replacement, but what about maintenance as well? And how do we tie that maintenance into the, to the lifespan of it? In the end, what we came back with was that there's a lot of buildings and there's a lot of needs. And sometimes the needs aren't always replaced apparent upfront. The staff is currently very busy, and trying to get that information together to put together a report is a very time-consuming thing. So what we had a conversation about was the possibility of having somebody come in and do a study on the buildings that would address maintenance issues, that would address capital issues. We can, as we spoke before, you know, look at the SPC and know that everything was put in 2004 and work forward to when those items should be replaced. But there's a lot that we might not be able to identify, or if we can identify, to have a professional opinion on when it should be done, the right, the right replacement at the right time. And then also consider what the buildings are used for and what the future growth potential is. How are we accommodating with our facilities through future growth? And I throw the word growth in there because at that point, that becomes deceivable, meaning a, a, a study like that, which we'd be looking maybe $50,000, would be 90% paid through development charges. And one of the additions that we talked about on October 27th at the operating meeting was an addition or a new line in parks and facilities admin for consulting of $5,000. So that would take care of the, of the municipal portion of that study. So when we come back on, on the eighth, sorry, is it the eighth or the ninth? I think it's the eighth. Okay, thank you. When we come back on the eighth, we'll come back with the budget enhancement sheet because in order to make sure that we are having the proper regime of maintenance and the proper scheduling for building capital replacement, and, and also maybe to get some, some outside information on, on the purposes of the buildings and, and some information that might help council and help us to make the right decisions at the right time. And due to staff restrictions as far as timing goes and, and how busy staff is, we'd really like to see maybe bringing in some help and helping us out with this, with this piece. So again, I'll, we'll bring a, a budget enhancement sheet on the eighth. But as I said, that won't change the bottom line on here because as I said, the, the 90% will be captured through development charges, and the other 10% is already captured through operating. So it won't, it won't be increasing the, the ask at this point. Does council have any questions on that at all?
Any comments or questions? Well, I very much agree with bringing in new eyes and outside eyes as much as we don't like to pay consultants. Our, our buildings really need to be looked at. And I know that we need to look at a long-term plan to see if we're going to leave our administrative offices in the same place. But in the meantime, we have to do something with them. We can't leave 12 Market Square looking like it does. We can't leave Town Hall looking like it does. We've spent money on everything else and let some of our best assets crumble around us. And if we don't start paying attention to them, then it's just going to cost more and more and more. The paint, those heritage windows that we put in, that I really voted for and pushed for on the upper floor, they're just full of flies. The paint's peeling off them, and we were told that they would last all kinds of times. 12 Market Square, the, the best part of 12 Market Square, please take this respectfully, the staff that, that work there. Beautiful area of storage and so on downstairs. But, but the outside of the building really is, is, is just crumbling around us. And if we don't make a move and do something to some of these now, then it, it's only going to get worse. And then as soon as we've made a decision as to where and what, then we start, need to start putting money away. But I'm sure that there's no one in this room that likes the looks of, of what, what we're working with right now, staff and council. Nobody intended for it to get that way, but every year we tried to put more money into technology, more money into roads, sidewalks, sidewalk, plows, equipment, wages, and all those things that we found important while everything else is going down around us. I would very much love to see a motion come to the floor with, with an expenditure that would be, would be limited or bring back an RFP, bring back something so that we can get going on these buildings because I don't want to look at them the way they are anymore. Counsel Richardson.
Thank you, worship. I agree with you. Will part of this RFP address whether our future needs for some of these properties is going to be there?
Absolutely. We'd have to do that so that we can use the 90% of the development charges.
Okay, that, that's my, my concern because I don't want to be doing a whole lot of work on a piece of property that we think we may not need. So if included in that was an evaluation as to whether it fits into our long-term goals or not, I, I'd be supportive of that.
So you're, you're making that motion? I can't, so you can.
If you wish, I will make that motion. Thank you, worship. Like I say, as long as there's, as long as there's provisions in there to, to look at each of these properties, try and establish, and I know it's difficult maybe for a consultant to do that, but to try to establish whether these properties are going to fit into our long-term goals, even if it's 10 or 15 years down the road. Does it fit in? Or are we just pouring money down the drain, fixing them up and keeping them until we sell them at some point down the road?
Perfect. That's exactly what I was looking for. Counsel McCormack?
Just wanted to add also, when we had committees like CDAC, we, we focused a lot of our time trying to figure out just that, what we, we thought were the proper buildings and what needed renovations. So now without these, these committees, you know, we're, we're going backwards. We've lost our momentum, and possibly it'd be another year before these committees are back in order and whatnot. So I would support Counsel Richardson.
Do you want to second the motion then?
Yes, mayor.
Comments or questions? Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
Yeah, through all that discussion, I, listen to the whole thing before you judge what I'm saying. But I, I'm reminded of the, the school process and how they evaluated buildings based on prohibitive to repair. And I hated that term, and it was very subjective. But at the same point, there's some logic in it where we could look at a building, like 12 Market Square, for example, and I'll grab that one just because if it, if it has a, a cost of maintenance going forward to keep it viable for its current use, but at the same time, we're visioning a whole new central admin, you know, there's a tipping point between maintaining its resale value if we decide to divest it and move somewhere else or, you know, getting us to the point where, where we're satisfied to tear it down and build something new that takes Market Square, you know what I mean? And so that whole strategic vision of what we're going towards in the future needs, it all, it's all good information going into that. And that's where we're, I guess we're going to get to that ultimate vision of what the future is for admin facilities in this town, as well as buildings like the one we're in and rental uses or what have you. So it's good information in any way that we take it. And I think it needs to be done from that third-party perspective, looking at all those things.
And I also, you know, I don't think that this is the first time the staff has either heard this or even thought about it and done some proactive work on it. So I do have a mover and a seconder. Susan, you have what you need? Any further comments or questions? I'm in favor of the motion? Motion's carried. Thank you. Oh, Mr. Gallery.
Once, once direction was determined, I think timing is one thing I just wanted to get council's feedback on a little bit.
Tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow, tomorrow wouldn't be soon enough for, for some of us. No, I, I think in, and I don't want to keep coming back to this, but you know, certainly in January, there is a real hope that we have, you know, a, a time for this council to sit down and really take a look at the strategic priorities. At that same time, as much as we've lost momentum, we haven't lost the work that was done by those committees. And I think that can be re-brought back forward. I, I, what I, what I would like to do is make sure that in January, we get as much of the research and time, and I'm, I'm very aware of the time, but get as, as much of the research before councils we possibly can. Because what I don't want to do is RFP out data analysis to the outside server where we've already got the information in-house. It just means to be presented back to council. And so if that RFP, if it was okay with council, if the development of that sort of request to go out and find those people was based on sort of some of the conversations that this council may have in January as far as direction goes, to make sure that the, the money's well-spent and well-focused when we, when we're asking consultants. So rather having a really wide term of reference, narrow the focus down a little bit in January and get that out. And I know that we want it done for a maintenance season so that we can actually start this work in 2021. I just don't want to get, so that we're, we have such a wide scope of work that we're, we're double, we're double-dipping on stuff, if council understands what I mean.
Right, Counsel Richardson.
I sense that somebody needs to comment on that.
I, I don't disagree with that, Ray. I, I think it's important, like I say, we're, not that we're just going to get one shot at it, but I think what we're, we're going to endeavor on a fairly major project for this council. So there really is no hurry to have it done before Christmas, I don't think. So I, I, I agree with you in the fact that maybe in January, we can have a wholehearted discussion as to where we want to go with this and, and put it in motion. And hopefully, before the end of this council, we have moved forward with it. But I, I agree. I, I have no problem waiting till January to, to try and get it, um, moving in that direction.
And I think that's, that's what actually had been discussed a few times is we need, we need to reset our priorities. We've got two years. We've lost a year. And we probably still got a little bit of time to lose. But I'd like to see some of this done before this term of council or a real good bite on it and some decisions made. So thank you. So we'll, we'll give a timeline of January and we'll sit down, you know, and, and, and discuss the whole thing. Okay. Good with everybody? Okay.
Great. Thank you. Chris, before you leave, I know that you wanted to have a discussion about parks and replacement of parks and, and.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Back up there. We didn't vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm in favor of the motion. Carried. Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Pinal. I don't have Susan sitting here next to me.
So earlier, the, the mayor brought up the discussion with the parks and some of the parks that we have parkland for, and we haven't put any parks on them. That leads into a conversation that you and I had had about establishing or going forward with some sort of a, a reserve towards play structures in parks, but which could be a, a part of a, a larger reserve for, for parkland. Is there anything that you just kind of wanted to add to that and contribute to the discussion?
Yeah, I just think that, I remember I, I did a report to council on the condition of our playground structures around the municipality a little while ago. And we had talked about it being a good idea to put some reserve money each and every year towards the replacement of those structures. So I guess it's just revisiting that, that concept. And we, we do have several structures around the municipality that were installed 20, 20 years ago. So they are getting towards the end of their life expectancy, and we do need to look at replacing them as the years go on. And I, I've, I've now had lots of conversations with different, different groups that are selling these models and concepts. And there's a lot of very new innovative ways to put play structures into different communities and different themes of play structures. And it's an exciting opportunity for our community if we can start to plan to replace these structures as we go. Not only the existing structures that are in place at certain parks, but also as we get new parkland like we're seeing over in the Hart subdivision. But you know, we have, when we have that money in reserves, it makes the decisions that much easier.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks a lot, Chris.
Thanks, Gresham.
So if I could just draw your attention to, to the sheets called Reserve Balance Projections. And I wanted to, I just wanted to touch base on this, just as you're considering. We're not, we're not looking for specific direction today. We're going to be coming back on the eighth and kind of bringing things together to wrap it up. But as you're looking through that summary sheet, and we got fairly specific with some of the reserves, we wanted to kind of talk about what those reserve balances are. Earlier, we talked about the fact that we did a little bit of cleaning up in the equity section after the last finance, that presentation of the financial statements. With that cleanup, I mentioned about 600,000 was identified as and confirmed by, was checked by the deputy treasurer, was double-checked by myself, and then finally sent off to the auditors for confirmation. And they agreed with that, that amount, that that was the right amount to transfer over to, to water. On the other side of it, in there, there was some money that was sitting in equity, which is absolutely fine. It's fully on board and it's a, a proper treatment for it. However, as we're rolling out for longer-term projections, I don't think we should leave anything in equity outside of the scope or vision of council going forward and as far as looking at long-term capital planning. So what we did is the remainder of it, we took it out and we put it into the Greater Napany Working Reserve. So currently, if you look in there, there's, there's a $5 million balance in there. Of that, about $1.5 million has been identified as a hold on it to pay for work that's in process, is being finished up, and a couple little pieces from last year's projects. Like sometimes with the road, there's a final top coat that's put down the following year. So that kind of identifies all those little tidy-up pieces, and 1.5 million will take care of that, which brings us out to about 3.6. As presented, as you go through the funding in that summary sheet, if council was to say, yeah, we're going to approve every project on there, believe me, I'm not, I'm not, that's not where I'm leading to. But if we were to say, yeah, we're going to go ahead with every project, we'd be committing 2.3 million of that, leaving a balance of 1.3. Now, a reserve, a general reserve or a working fund, it's really got two purposes. And we just put it there for now. I said, as, as, as we were housekeeping, we stuck it there for now and just, just, just to identify and make sure that that council had, had a view of that. But really, a working reserve, what it is, is we call it a, a tax stabilization account. So things that might happen that might cause some slight fluctuation. So things that might happen that might cause some slight fluctuations in the budget, we we tend to pay from out of there, or emergency situations, you know, the furnace breaks down or the the ice plant, something goes wrong with it, we need an emergency repair, and it hasn't been budgeted for, we we pull it out of there. The general rule of thumb, it's not a, you know, a stated value, but the general rule of thumb by organizations like the MFOA and AMCTO say that usually you want about 10% of your municipal portion of your tax levy as your kind of emergency funding. So that for us would be 1.3 million. So if we were to approve all these, all the, basically everything from the equity section that came over would be would be used. And so we'd use that up, and we'd want to maintain about 1.3 million going forward in that account if we were to follow the rule of thumb. The rest of the reserve accounts, I'm not going to go through each one of them, but the rest of the reserve accounts to the to the bottom of the total tax base, this is not our full scope of reserves. We also have all our development charges, but this is the one where there's flexibility or council has some measure to to use these. Some of them are very specific to certain items, accessibility, fire policing, you know, this is where the money for the SEBA fund is coming from. But that's, this is kind of, as as you go down, there's the 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 column that says 2021 projected, as presented, and you can kind of get the information there as to kind of where we're going to end up. And I'm sorry, I just realized I let my computer go to sleep so the people at home will have vision or see what we're talking about. So I'm just going to bring that up again. My apologies. So two things that I will point out about that is that below that, we have our utilities capital, our utilities reserves. And where I'm going with that is that we have our balances this year, so that utilities working, it used to be called the emergency management, had a balance of about 255,000 in there, and hasn't been used for years and years and years. So we transferred that 600,000 over, we put it in there, and we just called it the utilities working, which covers off any sort of unforeseen expenditure. We have our balances there. We have our contributions for both the capital and the maintenance lines. You can see the capital line is quite a bit lower. That's taking into account committed funds for finishing off the 2020 projects, so that we make sure that we're we're not giving you information of reserve balances without considering what we're going to be having to pay between now and the end of January for 2020. We projected at what our contributions will look like at the end of the year as we wrap up, and then what the activity might be next year, as well as as putting the amounts in there, 1.76 million, as presented in the summary sheet. So we get a good picture of what the balances are. One thing that's, you may or may not have picked up on, is that about a third of the way down, there's a reserve called the PUC sale, 3.68 million. That was funds from the sale of the Electrical Commission, and it was our electrical company, and it was ear-tagged and specifically put into investments that the interest was to be used to pay for the SPC, SPC debenture. That debenture runs out in 2024, so I've left it in here because right now, that's restricted, and we can't use it for the next couple of years. But when we hit 2024, then then council can decide whether they want to keep investing it, or if that comes out in with the other reserve, that'll be up to council at the time in 2024 as to exactly what they want to do with that. So I've left that in there. Even though it's restricted right now, in the future, it'll come up as something that could be used by the town. So I just left that in there for conversation. Now, the last piece is that if we were to approve every project that's in there, you can see what the balances are, that we just kind of balance out to where we should be in the the working fund or the working reserve. But we need to take into consideration that we also have these unfunded projects, and I'm sorry, I didn't get the title in there, but down the bottom left, we got Richmond Boulevard Phase 1, Roblin Road for 1.269 million, Richmond Industrial Park for 662, and 2019 unfunded roads projects. So we need to have a discussion about what we're going to do. I believe that there was a a report that came back from the previous treasurer to set up, what are we going to do? We're going to debenture it? How are we going to fund it? So there was some work that was done, but it it never quite got finished. So I kind of want to pick up where he left off and have that discussion, that if we use, if we use all those funds over here for the for the projects, we'll still have to come back and look at how we can fund this unfunded portion. The auditors want it cleaned up. It dates right back to 2006, it should be cleaned up. We can clean it up in a few different ways. One is we don't have any capital program in 2021, and we pay it off, which I don't think is a really viable option for our our long-term planning. Another option might be to go out for a debenture for 2.283 million and fund it over 20 years, like we did the the SPC, and and pay it off that way. Another option that I've seen in the past and have used is if a municipality does have a fairly decent cash flow, they can actually self-fund it as well. And and here's where I'm going with that. And again, this is just just something to mull over, and we can discuss it when we come back on the 8th. If we were able to just self-fund that, which basically we have been doing since 2006, we could set up a debenture schedule to pay back our own reserves over 20 years. If we were to go to Infrastructure Ontario and get that debenture, we would pay back, if we were to set that up today, we'd be paying 2.4% interest, which is higher than an investment. And I'll explain what I mean by that. If we were to self-fund it and use the same, we could basically set up a debenture schedule where we're paying it back to ourselves on the operating budget and charge 2.4% interest because one way, we'd be paying Infrastructure Ontario 2.4%, or if we self-funded it, we could pay our reserves 2.4%, which adds up to about $90,000 a year of a contribution towards it. So one, we're getting the cash in hand. Some people might say, well, what would we do if we if we were to get that cash in hand if we're okay for cash flow now? And and I'll bring that back with the the investment strategy, because I'll bring back some cash flow analysis of what we need on a monthly budget. But if if we were able to swing it from a cash flow perspective, it would be a way that we could raise extra funds towards capital projects in the future, which if we went for Infrastructure Ontario, we'd be paying anyway. And if we were to get the cash, we could invest, but right now, the investments are somewhere around 1.6, 1.7%. So actually funding it ourselves, we could possibly raise a higher amount of interest rate to go go towards capital. So all that to say, basically, we need to decide for that 2.28 million sometime between now and when we wrap up the budget, are we going to go out for a debenture to pay that back and then add that amount into the operating budget? Or are we going to look at the possibility of self-funding it to ourselves? With the potential that if somehow things change, then we could still go out and and debenture it at a later date. But anyway, I throw that out just for consideration, but this is the year that we do need to take care of it. We can't have it sitting on our liabilities anymore. The auditors have basically, at this point, said we need to get it taken care of. So I throw that out, and we can have a longer discussion. I can bring some cash flow analysis forward, maybe on the the meeting on the 8th, if you're interested in that at all. But as I said, well, one way or the other, we'll have to, we'll have to make a decision. Is there, is there any questions from council on that at all?
Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
Thank you. If we self-fund it in the debenture structure that you spoke of, how much freedom do we have on on setting up those terms? Could we do it at 0%?
We could. Because that's right now, that's what we're doing for, is it South Shore Road? That has been set up as something that we're we're paying back ourselves with 0% interest. Roblin Fire Station, we're paying ourselves back, but we are collecting a small amount of interest on that. So, yeah, it's total flexibility.
Counselor Penau?
Thank you, Worship. Paul, so since 2006, has has no money been going towards these projects that I see?
Some of them have been funded. So South Shore Road was funded, and then there was a, I forgot which project it was, the OEIFMA, where we're actually paying that out on a on a regular basis, so that's been funded. But these are the projects that seem to have slipped through the cracks. I think Richmond Boulevard was 2006, I think, if I if memory serves me correct. Most of them are closer to the time, but there was one that's a much smaller amount that just kind of fell through the cracks. And as I said, the the former treasurer did come forward with a report, but I believe at that point, it was to come back from further discussion. I don't know if, maybe that's when he ended up going up to the county, and and now I've picked up the mantra to carry it forward.
Thank you.
Just just to add to that a little bit, Mr. Day at the time was, there was a number of small projects that remained unfinanced, and there was one big question about how much we were going to finance on a major project, and that was the, at that point in time, where the pool was, as far as it was advancing fairly quickly, although it was a grant, we knew that there was there was that potential. There was other, the other big debenture that was coming up was the sewage treatment plan. And part of that is the size, obviously, if you get a large debenture out, you have better better rates that you'll pay back on, and he was trying to combine a few of those together as part of that report to do that. Unfortunately, some of the projects got spaced a bit, and then there was obviously a transition in in the finance department. So that's sort of where we were at, but the idea was is to to go back out and 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 basically finance those with a large with a large debenture at a at a very low rate, hopefully at that point in time. But that's where we sit today on those.
And the rates are low right now. Like I said, 2.4% is what Infrastructure Ontario has right now, which is quite low.
Okay, Counselor McCormack?
So somewhere down the road, Paul, you're going to be bringing back a report about surplus properties and tax sales and that kind of?
Well, I'll be bringing back the information for for tax sales, and I believe it will be Mr. Zetterberg that'll be bringing the information for surplus lands.
Just in the last two, we've done fairly well, and we've put these funds into
The so that right now, that was part of Mr. Zetterberg's report that came to council with the announcement of the sale of the old library, because there was the sale of the, I'm going to get it wrong, the subdivision. Heritage Park. So those funds right now, they're sitting in limbo because it was leading towards a discussion with council. As part of the budget, there was, I think it was just around a million dollars for the for the Heritage Park, and I think after the sale for 411, after all the fees came off, I think it was something like 386 is what's in the bank for that. And then the discussion now is to come back to council, what are we going to do with that? There had been some discussion about funding a centralized office in the future. I think there was some industrial land, and so then the discussion would come back to council at that point. So we take that that 1 million plus the 386, and where are we putting it?
So my point is that there's more to come, right? And and maybe that's some place that we could look to anticipate possibly helping fund items like this.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, we're on the right track, and hopefully this year is going to be a big turning point when it comes to that kind of a process.
Once the, once the land sale review is done, then we can, we can kind of move forward at that point, but we're kind of held in limbo until that's done.
Yeah, Counselor Richardson?
Thank you, Worship. And and this is probably going to be a very obvious question for you, Paul, but the reason that we were able to lend ourselves money, if that's the route that we're going to go, was because financially, we're, I don't want to say in really good shape, but financially, we're
We're okay.
We're okay. So if if we weren't, we wouldn't have that ability to do this.
That's correct. And a lot of that information, I know, it sounds like I'm going off on another track, but a lot of the information will come back with the investment strategy to make sure that, to show the months in historically when we need money. And anything that's over that, then we can look at putting into an investment that's very liquid. So we actually do have some money to invest, so we do have some liquidity, meaning we're not skipping meals. Yeah.
Deputy Mayor Kaiser?
I guess, like, when I think about this, with these unfunded projects as listed here, I'd rather see us self-fund them through the debenture structure rather than go out and get a debenture, because I wouldn't want to compromise our borrowing ability if we needed it on a large project like the wastewater treatment plan. I'd rather leave our capacity there as 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 much as possible. I'd be inclined to do it at the 0% line, and I ask that question because and I apologize, but it's a bit of smoke and mirrors to say, we're putting the 2.4% in. It's it's a fair rate, because that's what it would be if we went outside, but really, we're we're just taking from the levy to put in a rainy day account, if you will, or whatever else it might be considered for. I'd rather leave the tax rate lower. And having said that, then, when you look at the disposition of lands and the funds coming from that, my first instinct on windfalls like that, especially when they're very successful like the library, is to favor capital, new capital, but when we're sitting on existing liabilities, that maybe it's better to split it, that we deal with old liabilities, but also put some in capital and do a balanced approach going forward, because we've got a huge, as you've shown through the numbers today, we've got a huge shortfall on 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 capital assets and 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 their lifespans and all the rest of it. And I think we should be really focusing on on that stuff, but also dealing with our liabilities like these outstanding unfunded projects. So I
Do you think of like a balanced approach?
Yeah, I like the balanced approach, because, again, it preserves our borrowing capacity, it preserves our, it minimizes the impact on taxation long-term while still dealing with the things we have to deal with both now and in the future. Just my two cents.
Anything further? Yeah, Mr. Gallery?
Sorry, just to follow up a little bit on Counselor McCormack's comment, too, and and to the deputy mayor's point, is that keeping in mind, if we can rationalize in a fairly efficient manner the properties we we maintain, or and the properties that we have that we need going forward from the municipal perspective, we're going to do two things. One is there will be some revenue from from surplus if we if we decide to surplus those, but we're also going to take some of those future requirements off the books as well. So, you know, where we're sitting with 50-year replacement on a building, that building, it's not there, we save some of the the future costs on that, plus have some initial revenue. I think the the biggest, I guess, the biggest trip hazard in that particular process is to ensure, and I'm sure that Mr. Dauber would agree, we don't agree on everything, as you know, but we might agree on this point, is to ensure that that funding doesn't slip into operating, that
Yes.
that money has to remain with capital, because it's it's unsustainable. And and we've seen other levels of government who have sold off corporate operations and corporate buildings to finance, you know, operating deficits, and that's just not maintainable. So as long as we keep everything on the same side of the portfolio and keep it all in the capital, we should be okay in the way we manage that going into the future.
Yeah, then I would agree with that.
All righty, so next.
And then one of the other measures that we probably look at, that I was going to talk about a little bit later, but it does kind of tie into that, is that in in the past, we have had, and we're trying to break away from it, from that contributions from previous year's surpluses. And it's becoming more, less and less common to actually have that as a part of the operating budget. And and as as presented before, on October 27th, we pulled $100,000 of that 450 out of there with a five-year plan to get out of that. I I would like to and and plan on, hopefully coming back in the in the new year, at the end of the budget process, with a with a policy that any surpluses at at year-end would go towards capital contributions, so all these reserves that we have that are are zero, to split them out on a ratio of the needs. So that, basically, the policy says the direction is that any surpluses that are caught up and identified at the year-end and approval of the auditors, that they get distributed so that then we have a little bit of revenue to go forward, as well as looking at some of the injection from the surplus land sales and that sort of thing. So I just wanted to add that because that kind of fed into it as well, I think. And also to try and bring a little bit of light into that. I know the first part of this meeting started out pretty doomy and gloomy, looking at exactly how far behind we are. But if we can get a bucket and catch all those raindrops, then eventually we'll start to see some water at the bottom of the bucket.
Okay.
Okay, great. If I could have Mr. Zatterberg come up, we want, I mentioned that we were going to talk about cemeteries. Again, we haven't assumed it, but we wanted to look at what it might look like once we do assume it.
Okay, once again, these are the active cemeteries, a review of Riverside, does not include the cemetery lines under parks, which are the, part of the 35 other cemeteries that we look after. At this point in time, some of these two cemeteries are resting within Community Corporate Services. That does not mean that's where it's going to land in the future. It could, but it might go to another department. These numbers are based on what we've learned since May and are based on actual numbers since May. It does not include, the numbers do not include staff time. So you could probably, if you wanted to, in your minds, add another, at least $30,000 in what is, it's consuming in staff time to the budget. Also too, in a previous resolution, council directed us to make application to Superior Court and to have surveys done so that the land transfer could take place. Those are in the works. I don't have an end date to those, but the lawyers and the surveyors have given a given direction. Also not in these numbers is that we were very recently sold the last niche in the columbarium. And there is an opportunity in the future, once we have ownership of the land, to install new columbariums as we need. The cost of a new one, for example, for 48 niches, $22,000. And the return on investment over time would be 50, the revenue off that could be $53,000. I don't know when the break, the breakeven would happen because we don't know right now at what pace you can sell spaces in those. On the second page, Wayne Taylor has had a chance to go to the both cemeteries and give us an idea of what the capital costs or needs are for both of those properties. And so he's gone through the fencing, for example, the roads. They need a significant amount of work. There are trees on site that probably need to be removed or at least cleaned up. And then there's topsoil and leveling to some of the ground services that need to happen. And the total for that is roughly $350,000 for those two properties.
Just to add to Mr. Zatterberg's comments is I was recently asked to participate in an AMO consultation on cemeteries with the ministry. And the big consultation, part of the consultation is what's happening with the funds that are held in trust by the province. And there is, I guess there's an understanding from the province that the current system isn't working and that there needs to be some review on how both municipalities and private owners of cemeteries can can better access or better use those funds in the future moving forward. So there is a move afoot, I think, to take a serious look at the fact that local government is a partner in this with the provincial government and that our ability to manage many funds for many reasons for municipalities shouldn't be, shouldn't be treated any differently if we're talking about cemetery fundings. So it is possible in the future that, for instance, where Mr. Zatterberg just talked about columbariums, that we would actually be able to access the trust fund to upfront those costs. So the municipality wouldn't have to and put that money back into trust. So there's some changes like that, that I think our conversations are going, that I think we can, are going to be beneficial to trying to operate them into the future. And the only other comment is that at the next meeting, from a cemetery perspective, is that there will be some business case information that comes forward to council on how we try and operate them. So council can put their minds to what they believe is the best way to try and operate these sites in the future and how to support them from both an administrative standpoint and an operational standpoint as well. So that information is still yet to come. We're developing those, but at the next budget meeting, you'll have that in front of you as well.
I will point out that on that second sheet, we have some of these capital items. We've got some replacing of existing fencing, additional fencing, some roads, capital needs, tree removal, tree replacement and topsoil and leveling needs. They add up to about $348,000 in total. This is kind of looking forward towards the future. But as far as the funding that is there, there's a cemetery trust for about $550,000. I believe the regulations, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that you can only use the interest from that trust that's invested. So depending on how we proceed with it, how council wants to proceed as far as replacement goes, we could be looking at the possibility of town funds to upgrade those two cemeteries. So just keep that in mind.
Councilor Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Is it possible that if we look at this, the capital needs are 348,360, the interest is just over $9,000 a year? Can this go, be added on to the, what were you just, what was that?
Our long-term plan?
Yes.
Yeah.
The underfunded, unfunded projects, not underfunded, unfunded projects, can it be added on to that?
Yeah, I don't see, I don't think there's any restrictions that would stop us from doing that. As far as, are you talking about going ahead, doing some of the work and then, and then basically paying it back?
Including it in like the debenture line that we were talking about, yeah.
That would be up to council, but yeah, that's certainly a possibility. I know that there's a lot of work that needs to be done and now we're taking it over. I know Brant's team has done quite a lot of work on it, but I also know there's an expectation from the residents as well as to those two properties and facilities.
Councilor Johnson.
Thank you. And I just wanted to confirm, we're just discussing, we don't have a definite timeline for when the town will be taking it over. But there is no doubt in anyone's mind, we are taking it over, right?
That's correct. Great. Any more questions?
Well, I have, I have a couple. You say the staff time is not included on your budget first on page one. Brant, I'm assuming that you mean what your office staff has put into trying to get it organized and so on.
That's right.
I know that we've done, and they have done a tremendous amount of work answering the phone, figuring out. Don't want to say who's on first, but you know what I mean. The other thing is, when you look at the fact that you can only use the interest, how do places like in Cherry Valley and so on, when those things are privately owned, how do they operate?
They're under the same rules that we are as far as their trust fund. They can only use the interest. The only, the only time that we could use any principal off that fund is to buy more land. And we have more than enough land at Riverside to last well, long into the future.
We sell land?
You can.
Fundraising as well. There's some, some of the municipalities would have fundraising bequeathed, going to lawyers' offices for unspecified estates, that sort of thing.
So that's correct. So if the properties are run efficiently and it's, they're seen to be run efficiently, there's more opportunity for fundraising. And just giving you an example is it's Glenwood and Picton. The year that they received $80,000 in donations from wherever, the operations and app to receive $250. So there's, there's, there's opportunities. There's also, they've never applied for grants for students, summer students, for example. Those are, those are areas that we'll be exploring.
So it is the way it is because it just maybe has been a little bit mismanaged. And I say that with all due respect because it was volunteers. But there is a light at the end of the tunnel that we could turn this around. Because when you look at the, you know, the income already, just from openings and closings, you know, burials and sales in a short period of time on a piece of property or two pieces of property we don't own.
So ultimately, the treasurer's goal would be that the cemeteries fund themselves.
Okay. I guess that was the bottom line you wanted to know. Thank you.
Yeah, Councilor Richardson.
Thank you, Worship. And this got really nothing with the budget, but it, I don't want to overtask your department to look after this too. Is your department, is it sustainable long-term or are we need helpers? Are their thoughts abreast with respect to restructuring or? I just don't want to tell you guys that because like I say, this is a big undertaking and it's important.
So in May, when we receive these, these properties, we luxury of being in the middle of COVID and programs not running. So we actually had a staff person that normally would be working in programs that could devote more time than would normally be available to these cemeteries.
But is it sustainable would be another question. I've watched the, because they're across the road, I can see how much they work and how hard they work over there. I would, I would jump in as an unauthorized person to say, I don't think it's really sustainable.
Just given that, so that's what we're, that's what I'm in the process of working. We're working on all the business cases for all the resources that are going to be need going into 2021 in all the different departments. This will certainly be one that's going to be brought to the forefront because there's both, not only administrative duties, but there's also onsite duties that are required and trying to develop a business cases to what's required year-round and what's required on a seasonal basis. And then what is required basically just from an administrative sales component because they're obviously very different pieces to that. Where we're actually, some of that, I just called it up on the screen, some of the background work we've done. But I think the other part of the equation that we haven't really looked at as far as revenues, and it's maybe a bit down the road, but I think one thing we can take a look at is that, you know, ancestry is something that is important to a lot of people. And there's actually, you know, resources that we can provide, whether it's tourism resources or tourism ancestry. But as we all know, information all has a value to it and being able to assemble information and provide that to people, there may be some value in it as well. So there may be some type of, you know, I hate to say cemetery-related tourism, but there is. And to some extent, once we can manage the information and coordinate it and gather all that, there may be some other types of revenues that we can see in the future that are, you know, providing a service to people who are looking for that kind of data. But I think the other thing we have to, we have to put in our minds is currently we're talking about two major cemeteries. But there are a number of other cemeteries in our area that are being run by local, local boards and religious affiliated cemeteries. And part of what we need to look at as far as the business case from a staffing model is how do we support those? To keep those sustainable as long as we possibly can. So they're not all now under our jurisdiction within a couple of years. And so part of, I think, one of the resource planning that we're kind of thinking of, looking long-term is what resources do we need? Not only to look after these, but to support those that are trying to keep them under their own auspice to make sure they can do that for a longer period of time. Because I'm not, you know, on this AMO committee, I'm not hearing from anywhere in the province where people are saying, this is a great moneymaker, folks, let's get in the cemetery business. It's just, that's not the way it is. And there's lots of local challenges. I think the only advantage to the community, if we can get the buy-in from the province, is that, you know, that the reserve funds for the cemeteries we maintain aren't treated any different than any other reserve that you look after on a normal basis, that you could dip in or add to as a council because you're accountable. Where, you know, they're concerned about private cemeteries where there's not necessarily that same level of accountability to make sure those trust funds always exist. So, but anyway, all of those will come back to our next meeting in the business case.
Councilor McCormack.
Like with St. Albans, because St. Albans was being taken over by a group that was recognized as being professional and well put together and all that, somehow they came about to get this benefactor who has committed half a million dollars over, you know, a number of years. And I think, as was mentioned, if the cemeteries are well-run and appreciated by the families that have members buried there, you'll see more, more support, more financial support.
If I could just, I can just add to St. Albans is that town crews cut St. Albans. So that, so that's one of those cemeteries where we've chosen to help out as much as possible so that it does not revert to us.
And a few others.
And there's a few others, yes.
Some of them active, some of them inactive. Is St. Albans still active?
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions or comments on the cemeteries? It's certainly been a great job by you and the crew at 12 Market. It's a good thing to have somebody in that position that's interested in it. Sure. Anybody like to have a break? Yeah, let's stretch, let's stretch for 10 minutes, please.
Thank you. Thank you.